All right, Heather, Counselor Hill, would you read us out of closed session, please?
Sorry, once again, I have it teed up. Apologies. I move this council certified by a recorded vote to the best of each council member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and identified in the motion convening the closed session or heard discussed or considered in the closed session.
Second. Ms. Thomas.
Mayor Walker.
Yes.
Vice Mayor McGill.
Yes.
Counselor Hill.
Yes.
Counselor Payne.
Yes.
Counselor Snook.
Yes.
All right, thank you. And I call this meeting to order. We will have a moment of silence. All right, thank you. Ms. Thomas, would you do roll call, please?
Mayor Walker.
Present.
Vice Mayor McGill.
Here.
Counselor Hill.
Here.
Counselor Payne.
Here.
Counselor Snook.
Here.
All right, thank you. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I just want to confirm that we aren't removing anything from the agenda. We're just going to keep it as is and just keep it. And we're going to introduce further discussion after tonight for item 612, I'm sorry, regarding the credit card policy. I just wanted to clarify our intention was to still have.
We're not removing it.
Okay, just want to make sure. All right, then I move to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll second.
All right, Ms. Thomas.
Mayor Walker.
Yes.
Vice Mayor McGill.
Yes.
Counselor Hill.
Yes.
Counselor Payne.
Yes.
Counselor Snook.
Yes.
All right, thank you. So we're at announcements now. I would like to just start out by saying welcome to Mr. Boyle's. A new city manager, first official meeting. He's been working over the past month. But this is your day one, so welcome and just wanted to give you an opportunity to just say hi and then just thank you for the time you've put in over the past month and we look forward to working, working with you.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilors.
All right, are there any other announcements?
Mayor, I have an announcement. The Virginia Department of Social Services, the Commonwealth of Virginia State Board of Social Services Benefits Specialist Appreciation Month. There's a resolution of appreciation, whereas Virginia has provided a safety net to the most vulnerable citizens of the Commonwealth by administering the benefit programs of SNAP, TANF, medical assistance, general relief, auxiliary grant, refugee cash assistance, and energy assistance by local Department of Social Services. And whereas Virginia's landmark welfare reform legislation and the present social economic climate in the United States and Virginia have significantly impacted the services provided by local benefit programs specialists, calling upon them to creatively promote individual self-sufficiency and personal responsibility. And whereas Virginia continues to experience unprecedented implementation of complex policies and procedures in all major benefit programs, as well as adjusting to new processes of working remotely and relying on technology for processing cases and issuing benefits during a public health emergency as essential employees, and whereas Virginia's 3953 benefits program specialists, 3450 specialists, 463 supervisors, and 40 managers have been at the forefront of public efforts to meet the need, steadily maintaining a high rate of application processing and case management to ensure that those qualified for social services and continue to receive them. And whereas 38,897 TANF recipients and an additional 3,397,940 dollars in TANF diversionary payments were issued to prevent long-term dependency on public assistance, 773,719 SNAP recipients, 1,622,214 medical assistant recipients, 458 general relief recipients, 3,254 auxiliary grant recipients, 128,967,000 energy assistant households, and 4,781 children under 17 in foster care are served through the Benefit Programs Division and dependent on the dedication and commitment of benefit program specialists who handle their case in an accurate and timely manner, and whereas benefit program specialists are continually faced with reconciling an environment of rapidly changing policies, procedures, and technological advances with quality control requirements, and whereas benefit program specialists provide ethical public service, respect human dignity, are responsible for the application of the law, demonstrate personal integrity, and promote professional excellence. Now therefore be it resolved on this 21st day of October 2020. The State Board of Social Services does hereby commend all benefit program specialists across the Commonwealth for a job well done and recognizes the month of February 2021 as Benefit Program Specialist Appreciation Month, calling upon Virginians to join in acknowledging their public service contributions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, I have another announcement related to the Police Civilian Review Board. Unfortunately, we haven't been able to schedule interviews by tonight's meeting, but council has decided we're going to schedule those interviews for this week and hold a special meeting this week in order to make that final appointment, so we can just finally get that filled this week and not need to wait for the next council meeting. So again, later this week, we'll be making that final appointment and conducting those interviews.
Thank you. Are there any more announcements? All right. So we don't have the next one. So Ms. Thomas, would you read the consent agenda, please?
Consent agenda, one minute, January 19, special meeting, January 28, schools budget work session, February 3, budget work session. Two, appropriation, housing opportunities for people with AIDS HIV grant, award $20,000, second reading. Three, appropriation, 2020 local emergency management performance grant supplemental, $99,608, second reading. Four, resolution, community development block grant, 2020 through 2021, Alamo Hall, home improvement program contingency plan, 2020, 2021, minor annual action plan amendment, one reading. Five, resolution, city market sublease, 2021, one reading.
All right, thank you. So I just have a question about the city market. So is Mr. Brown, yeah, he's here. Does this have to, is this paid whether we have the actual market or not? Was this paid last year even though we had different, we're not at the downtown location?
Yes, ma'am. He did, they did reduce it a little bit, but it was paid. Wasn't know we had the market there or not.
Okay. So is there anything different? Is there a different provision in the, for this year, or?
No, ma'am.
Be paid whether we had the market or not again?
Correct. Where our plan is to at least start there as a drive-through, like we did last year at the high school and at Penn Park. Those options are not available this year.
Okay, so this, this location will be used no matter what, even if it's a drive-through market?
Correct.
Okay, that helps. Okay, that's good. All right. Thank you. Yeah, the high school and the location worked out really well and was very safe. So if we can do that downtown too, that would, if we can't do the normal market, which I know everyone missed, that would be good. All right, well, that helps me with that. So I would just ask if we could vote on number four separately and then everything else, we should be good to them.
All right, I move we adopt a consent agenda with the exception to item four, so with items one, two, three, and five.
And I'm sorry to interrupt, Mayor Walker, did you want to see if there was any?
Oh.
Thank you, yes, if there are any public comment.
If you'd like to speak to council about one of those items on the consent agenda, please click the raise hand icon in the Zoom webinar. If you're on via telephone, you can press star nine.
While we're waiting on that, Ms. Attack, could you just, what is the amount that is going to be spent on this one project? Because I didn't see that.
It's a little over $47,000.
Thank you.
Hey, Mayor Walker, I do not see any hands raised.
Okay, thank you. All right.
So I move we adopt the consent agenda, items one, two, three, and five.
Second.
Ms. Thomas.
Mayor Walker.
Yes.
Vice Mayor McGill.
Yes.
Counselor Hill.
Yes.
Counselor Payne.
Yes.
Counselor Snook.
Yes.
All right, thank you. That carries five oh. Next up, we have the city manager response to community matters from the previous meeting.
Better vote on item four.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
I move to adopt item four, resolution for the community development block grant, Alamo Hall, home improvement program contingency plan and minor annual action plan amendment.
I'll second that one also.
Mayor Walker.
No.
Vice Mayor McGill.
Yes.
Counselor Hill.
Yes.
Counselor Payne.
Yes.
Counselor Snook.
Yes.
All right, that carries four to one. Thank you, thanks for the reminder. So now, next up, we have the city manager response to the community matters and Mr. Boyle's first meeting, so just everyone remember that. If he forgets something, just remind him when, during your comment period.
Please, if you would, we've got nothing prepared for tonight, being, as you said, Mayor, my first day. We will make sure that at your next meeting, anything that was previously asked for, we would meet as well as tonight's request.
All right, thank you. I didn't just want to assume, so.
No, that's, thank you.
Right. Next up, we have community matters and I'll turn it over to Mr. Willer. It looks like we have five speakers signed up in advance and so then we'll have 11 additional spots.
Thank you. If you'd like to get in line for one of those additional spots, click the raise hand icon in the Zoom webinar. If you're on via telephone, you can press star nine. The five people that signed up in advance are Jessica Manley, followed by Myra Anderson, followed by Betsy Redker, Pastor Marvin Morgan, and Josh Karp. And I don't see all of those people present, but I will call on the first person, Jessica Manley. Each person will get up to three minutes to address council and please tell us your place of residence when you start your remarks. Jessica, you're on with council, go ahead.
Hello, hello, Mayor Walker and the council. Thank you for hearing my testimony. My name is Jessica Manley. I live at 1414 Hazel Street in Charlottesville. I'm speaking today to raise a public infrastructure concern, the need for a lighted crosswalk or overpass at the intersection of Hazel Street and High Street. And the continuation of the sidewalk on both sides of High Street. This intersection is incredibly busy for pedestrian crossways as families from the Martha Jefferson and Locust Grove neighborhoods use this crosswalk to access the Vanna River Trail, Vanna River Outfitters, businesses on High Street, and children walk to Burnley Moran Elementary School. There's also a city bus stop on both sides of High Street at this junction. Right now, there's a fading painted crosswalk and a pedestrian sign, but as a resident who crosses the street many times per day to walk my dog, I can tell you that cars are not heeding the signs and they're coming in very fast from 250 and also merging in from Mead Street and High Street from downtown in the other direction. It's incredibly dangerous. I've almost been hit several times myself. A pedestrian was hit several years ago and thankfully not killed. But as this intersection becomes more popular, as the Vanna River Trail develops, there is really a need for a substantial crosswalk, a lighted crosswalk at this junction to protect public safety and also better sidewalks on both sides of High Street so people can access downtown from this neighborhood. Thank you very much for considering my comment.
Thank you.
Mayor Walker, next up was Myra Anderson, who I don't see that she has joined yet, but I'll keep an eye on her. So next we'll go to Betsy Redker. Betsy, you're on with city council. You've got three minutes.
Okay. Oh, cool. Can you hear me?
We can.
Oh, all right. This is my first time on the webinar. Hello, city councilors. I just, I thought I would speak tonight to advocate for when you look at the credit card policy to be inclusive of a way to reimburse or to gift cards or whatever it is to our community members who we really are trying to serve. And it's hard to serve the community if we don't make it easier for them to come and talk with us. I work, I volunteer with the housing authority and we do offer gift cards for some meetings where they take a long time and they take a lot of sort of focus for residents to give feedback and it's the best feedback we get. We can't serve them without it, so any, I just sort of read about it and started thinking about all of the ways that we hear information and I think this is an important one, so we're not just hearing from our own peers and people who might invite us to lunch or whatever other, I was thinking back to as a young architect, the, the men would always go golfing together. And, you know, the women weren't invited. So, you know, just trying to be inclusive. The, I feel like government is there to support our most vulnerable citizens. And so we need to encourage as much participation in that as we can. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Walker, the next person who signed up in advance is Pastor Marvin Morgan and he sent me an email saying he may be late to the meeting, so I'll keep an eye out for him as well. Next we'll go to Josh Karp. Josh, you're on the city council. You've got three minutes.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Hi, good evening, councilors. My name is Josh Karp. I live at 1510 Amherst. I'm here to talk about the garage at 7th and Market. I'm probably not surprised to hear it, but I am not a fan. So maybe a few years ago, making a new garage made sense downtown. Warswee never filled up even before COVID, but Market Street got pretty close to full at peak times and we had money in the budget. Maybe we could afford $15 million for a new parking structure. But that was then and lots changed in the past year. Obviously, both garages are mostly empty these days and hopefully demand comes back after, after people are vaccinated. But it might not be the same demand that we had before COVID. People have been working from home for almost a year now and some of them keep doing it, at least part of the time. Meanwhile, the market doesn't think that offices are coming back. People are dumping real estate stocks and the forecast is not suggesting that it's a great investment to build offices and parking garages. So I don't know what they will be for parking in a year, but honestly, no one does. At the same time, also because of COVID, we're in this budget crunch. From what I've heard, we'll have to raise taxes to pay for what's in the proposed CIP right now, and that's with cuts to housing, parks, and sidewalks. I wouldn't mind parking downtown so much if we didn't have to raise taxes and cut from the housing budget to pay for it. But money is tight now and I don't think it's right to build some more space for cars when we're not building enough space for people. So we don't know what parking demand will look like in a year or two and we don't have money to pay for more cuts. But I've heard the argument that we don't have a choice. We've got to build a garage to meet the obligations to the county. But I think we do have some options here. We can give the county spaces in the Market Street garage, give them the land back, build a smaller garage with housing on top of it. We can build something, even if it's not the thing that's in the CIP right now. So if you all think this is the best way to spend the money, $15 million, then, then fine, go ahead and find the garage. But if you don't think it's a good use of money, then you can, you can vote against it. As you know, last week, the planning commission voted unanimously to recommend delaying funding for the garage and reducing it and thinking about scope differently. Counselor Snook has written, I agree, that the responsible choice here is to delay funding until we know better what demand will look like after COVID. And I think the planning commission and Counselor Snook are just right about this. Let's see what parking demand looks like after COVID, what the budget looks like after COVID. But funding the project at 7th and Market right now, as proposed in the CIP, could be a mistake we'd be paying for for years. So I hope that you will all think about what else to do with the money and the space and ask staff to bring back a budget that matches your priorities. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And Myra Anderson has now joined us. Myra, you're on the city council and you've got three minutes.
Good evening. Can you hear me? We can. Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council, and thank you for allowing me a few minutes to speak on a topic that is very close to my heart and even more closely connected to my DNA. I am from Charlottesville. And when I say I'm from Charlottesville, I not only mean that I've lived here my whole life, but have seven generations of my family dating back to the enslaved families of Monticello. And I want to address with you the issue of the slave auction marker and the call for a museum of the enslaved. Both of these issues are very close to my heart because six of my ancestors were among the 33 sold on auction block in Court Square at the estate sale of Thomas Jefferson. To start, let me say, as inadequate as the marker was, I found it incredibly problematic and disheartening that a white man would take it upon himself to steal or remove a plaque that was in no way connected to his DNA and without consulting 99.5% of the local black community and 100% of the descendant community. From what I saw on the news, there was a majority white effort for a museum of the enslaved and the only thing missing is the same thing that was missing in 1829, and that's black voice and black opinion. And I don't just mean one or two black individuals. Now, before the pandemic, I'd attended one of the meetings of the Historic Resources Committee and I urged the committee to get more feedback from the descendant community and from the Charlottesville African-American community by and way of engagement meetings. I advised holding such meetings on various days and the times to accommodate the work schedule of many, and then the pandemic hit. So I'm here to say once again, before any auction block marker is designed or before any demands for a museum are given any level of consideration, please revert back to the original plans before the pandemic and solicit more feedback from the descendant community and the black African-American community. And not just feedback from one or two, but of many. Many of the descendants of the families who ancestors were sold in Court Square, the Gillette's, the Hubbard's, the Grangers, and the Hearn are still right here in our city. My ancestors had no voice in 1829, but seven generations later, the descendants do. Our voices deserve to be heard and should be heard on any type of memorial. Reparation theory states that it is up to those who were most affected by a historical injustice to be key amplified voices in determining what might be symbolic restorative actions. So please, please, please reconvene the engagement process around these slave markers. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. I'll just comment as the person who sits for council on Historic Resources Committee. I really appreciate this feedback. It certainly is in line with where the Historic Resources Committee has been situated and how it's recommended to former acting city manager, Mr. Blair. And we just spoke last week during our annual meeting because it really was the pandemic that stopped that engagement process. There were, I was aware also that there were dates and there was a really robust engagement plan and that was being planned on for the March timeframe. And so I think that right now, the committee is getting around, trying to figure out, okay, what does that look like? Because if this pandemic isn't going to be coming to a close and we're not going to find ourselves in face-to-face meetings in the coming months, we do feel that, the committee does feel that it is time to evaluate what are some other ways that we can engage with the descendant community and more holistically in the shorter term and then, but we still believe that longer term, there is going to be, have to be a more face-to-face engagement. So I will certainly pass that feedback on to the committee, which convenes again on Friday as part of its, second part of its annual meeting. And again, really appreciate that feedback and know that that committee is very much committed to that approach and, and doing that comprehensive engagement.
And Mayor Walker, Pastor Morgan has not joined us yet, so I'm going to go on to some of the other people who've raised their hand. If you want to get in line, please click the raise hand icon in the Zoom webinar. Council can hear from up to an additional 11 or 12 folks. And first up is Don gathers. Don, you're on with council. Go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. I hope everyone's doing well. Just a couple of things this evening. Before we pass along any further consideration about spending millions of dollars on, on another parking garage, I just wanted to point it out that it is my understanding that two of our homeless people died this past week. So just let that sink in for me. We're spending money on parking and that's where our concern is and not on our homeless population. Before we throw another dime towards parking or toward bike lanes or towards trees, and I don't want to upset anybody's apple cart because those things are important, let's take care of our people. Let's take care of our people before we start to concern ourselves with, with the needs of the, of the, of the city. The people are in need right now. The people are hurting. And as I continue, this, this, this whole credit card fiasco is just a freaking mess. Our city is on fire and you all were elected or hired, if you will, to be the firemen. Even at the time that you came on council, there was a raging inferno. You were expected to, to quell those flames, flames to put them out, not to fan them, not to throw additional logs on the fire, not to pour gasoline on, on an inferno. Rather than being constructive and decent firemen, sadly, it seems like some of you all are arsonists. If we can pour 40, 50, $60,000 into consultants to come in and give us ideas and rational, rationalize what we need in the city, if we have citizens doing the work, it only makes sense to pay them as well. This goes back to what I've been saying for years. There is absolutely no reason why there is only one board or commission that is paid a stipend for the work that they do. That is just ludicrous and it's time for it to stop. Any citizen who volunteers his or her time should be compensated something for that volunteer. It should be recognized. I don't know why the planning commission was set up that way, that they're the only ones who receive a stipend, but it's, it's, it's not, it's not proper. It's not fair at this point in time. And if that was done, I think that this other issue never would have reared its ugly head. But since it did, and since apparently there were some who knew what was going on, there was a better way to handle. There was a different way it could have been attacked. Mr. Boyle, I hope that you will come up with a concrete and solid framework as far as what the, the policy will be. And I really would like to hear from the city attorney's office as to where they first were, were pushed in this direction to take a look at. And if we have to for you that, I will, but I really need to hear from, from Ms. Robertson as to what, what the.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And the next three speakers who have their hands up are Wes Bellamy. And the next three speakers who have their hands up are Wes Bellamy, followed by Tanisha Hudson, and then Emily Dreyfus. Dr. Bellamy, you're on the city council. You've got the three minutes.
Good evening. I hope, can you all hear me? Sorry.
We can.
All right, great. Good evening. Hope all is well from your perspective. This is my first time being on this side. You're my first time being at a council meeting in a while, so a little weird, virtual, but you know, I think everybody's making the best of what they are. I just had a couple of comments. I just left the violence prevention meeting, which is being held. Well, I don't think, I'm at liberty to say where the meetings are being held, but there were a slew of community members who are receiving some training in terms of how specifically to stop the violence, intervene in different ways, and furthermore, stand up for the community. There are individuals who have come from out of town, far and wide to lend their time, as well as trusted community members who are, again, dedicating their time to ensure that the shooting stop, that the homicide stop, and that we have a safer community overall. What I will admit, I am somewhat perplexed with, with the recent news headlines. And I understand very well, sometimes things are written for a wide variety of different reasons. But this, this credit card situation, one that, that I've been through personally when I was on council, and now apparently I was under some kind of investigation of sorts, if you will. But the, the fact that when you look at currently, there is an effort to provide individuals with gift cards, not only for doing community work, but for lending their assistance to our community, and that's being framed in a way as improper, essentially because it may not fit the mold that some individuals may be accustomed to, is not only disheartening, but it's extremely disappointing. We know that our community is one that has been ravished not only by white supremacy and systemic oppression, systemic oppression and racism, but we know our community is one that's been trying to say that we are trying to put our best foot forward in terms of creating a more equitable society. We don't do that by consistently staying within the confines of how things have always been done. We do that by thinking outside of the box. And I just want to be very candid, just because someone doesn't do something in a manner in which you may do it or the manner in which you may believe that it should be done, doesn't make it wrong, and it definitely doesn't make it a crime. I was on the council in which we never adopted a clear credit card policy, specifically in terms of a limit per councillor. And candidly, to my recognition, I don't remember us saying that we had to get certain permissions from each other as councillors or anything of that manner. So what I've been seeing transpire with Mayor Walker is disappointing, and I hope that we as a city and as a council not only can contribute to making our community a better place, but we can all work better holistically. I stayed up to three minutes. I hate it when people went over three minutes.
We have two additional hands raised right now, Tanisha Hudson and Emily Dreyfus. Tanisha, you're on with council. You've got three minutes.
Can you guys hear me okay?
We can.
So I'm just going to piggyback off what everybody else is saying. First and foremost, let me start off by just saying this, because I'm, I'm not even talking to council. I think all five of you are very disappointing at this point. I'm speaking to the people of Charlottesville, if they are listening, and if they watch this later on. What we're seeing happen to Mayor Walker is nothing more than what we saw happen to Dr. Richardson. Let's go back to August twenty nineteen, when he tried to implement a credit card policy. You didn't let him. So all of this could have been prevented with Mayor Walker if you allowed that policy. But let's go back even further, twenty eighteen, when an article was written about Nakia West, Kathy, Mike, Heather, and all the credit card usage back in twenty eighteen. Chris Cullinan knew what she was spending. Your auditor knew what she was spending. Everyone in finance, Chrissy Hamel, I mean, I could go down the list of names. Y'all all knew, and you waited till now. But see, this is operation, how white people work. This is what y'all do. Y'all don't want her to run for council again, and you want to try to, try to find a way to shut her down. You, if you wanted to shut her down, you should have did it a little bit better than this because you're making it look like this is just the type of shit that white people do, period. That's how you're making it look. And you did it to Dr. Richardson, you did it to Wes Bellamy, you did it to Al Thomas, you did it to Maurice Jones. It's a repeating cycle. It's a repeating cycle. Whenever it's somebody of color, it's a repeating, and then you shut them down and you say, listen, we just going to go ahead and give you some money to shut you up. We just going to make you sign this non-disclosure agreement. You don't want people to talk about what they've been through. Well, here I am, a little black girl, and I'm going to talk about Brian Wheeler still got his job. He denied me my First Amendment right because of Heather Hill. He thought that I was going to come for her. He's still sitting there pushing buttons for this meeting right now. He still got his job. Mike Murphy completely lied. He still had his job. He retired. Chief Baxter started a whole bunch of nonsense because he didn't get the money that he wanted to get out of the budget. He still had his job and he retired. They all got their retirement. But y'all all bundled together, and you have a, I know you pushing this effort. I know you pushing this effort. This is you. This got you and Lisa Robertson written over it all day with a little sprinkle of Lloyd Snook because he an attorney too. I know that y'all pushing this. I know y'all are. It's pathetic. It's sad. It's sad. And y'all all look so bad. And I told y'all before, I'm going to say it one more time because I got fifteen seconds left. I hope not nay five of y'all ever won a political career ever again because the turmoil that you've been putting this city through in the last year and a half, everybody will remember, all five of you, not just the mayor.
Thank you.
Next up is Emily Dreyfus. Emily, you're on the city council. You've got three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and members of council. Thanks for this opportunity. I am here to speak on behalf of the Legal Aid Justice Center at one thousand Preston Avenue and encouraging you to make sure that affordable housing for very low-income people stays as your top priority or one of the very few topmost priorities in the upcoming budget debates. I was present for the presentation that you had during the earlier work session, and I have a couple of comments about that, and I'm sure there will be more to come with the Charlottesville Low Income Housing Coalition. But primarily tonight, I just wanted to say that level funding is really not enough, and that's what this looks like. I realize this is going to be a tough budget year, but I do think the plan needs to be much more aggressive. Level funding and adding administrative staff support does not go toward adequately at all toward meeting the needs that you all identified in the needs assessment back now two years ago, which was over three hu, three thousand, three hundred people in the city alone who are in need of affordable housing solutions of different sorts. So I hope the Affordable Housing Plan will go much further. I also want to point out that we don't need to compare ourselves to other communities. I think the city really needs to measure its achievements by what solves the needs within the community and thoroughly addresses racial inequities. I appreciate that the consultants were very responsive to the input they got about increasing homeownership. But one thing I really think the city needs to start is to pair up anti-displacement outreach to current black homeowners and increase tax relief and mortgage assistance in order to help prevent additional displacement. And lastly, I just want to keep the word up about the fact that trickle-down housing, as people call it, really doesn't work, that building housing that does not have deep affordability, especially to, in my opinion, to address the needs of the very low-income people, people under fifty percent of the area median income. It's really not something that the city needs to be part of or incentivize and encourage because more housing just results in more people. It doesn't result in stopping displacement, and that's where the energy really should be focused. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mayor Walker, we've now heard from eight speakers. I do not see Pastor Morgan yet. If anyone else would like to address council, please click the raise hand icon in the Zoom webinar. If you're on via telephone, you can press star nine. And Pastor Morgan might have been referring to the opportunity at the end of the meeting as well. I wasn't sure about that. And I do not see any other hands.
All right. Thank you. Are there any comments, councilors? All right. I'll just say, in, with regards to the the credit card used, I made the decision to have a public discussion about this memo that was sent to us because there have been instances in the past where things have been leaked. And I knew what the past conversations about spending that no, no other councillor ever had to deal with, even councillor Bellamy, until I got here. And there was an effort, once I arrived, to figure out what, what I've stated in the past, where are typical weaknesses that people have. I study history. There is at no point that I would ever have a family member of mine have to read in the paper about me spending something that I shouldn't be spending or taking something that does not belong to me. It became really clear once I released this memo that exactly what I thought would have happened had it been leaked occurred. Where there is a segment of the population who is saying some of the same things that we've heard today, and there's a very large percentage of the population who is saying, of course she is doing something wrong. Of course she's not spending properly. And so outside the memo, because the memo is out there, and I've expressed these concerns before, there has to be a better way for these conversations to happen. I'm very concerned that, according to my colleague, councillor Hill, that part of the reason why people are not having these discussions with me is because they, about anything, is because they are scared to have the conversations with me. There isn't one staff member who can say, you may not like what I'm saying. You might not think things that are a priority for me are an actual priority. You may not want to focus on the things that I'm pushing as agenda items, but at no point, even when I know that you all don't agree with me, have I ever been disrespectful unless disrespectful means fighting so that a population of people who've been oppressed, if you view those type of things as disrespectful. So this memo, receiving it, was very hurtful to suggest that there's some kind of civil or criminal penalty, civil penalty or criminal procedure that could take place as a result of, in this case, less than four hundred dollars is more than insulting. I've had to have conversations, not many, most of my family just called and said, oh, you know, not even surprised. But to have a conversation about my grandfather who thought there had been something wrong because he's older and that something was going to happen to me as a result of this. And whether it had ever been relea, if I released it or you all had leaked it, the issues here are, are very troubling. And so I've already stated, not very clearly, because I shouldn't have been necessarily doing a lot that particular day, but I have been clear about the rules that I was told was if you spend over six hundred dollars, you need a W nine and that you can't do anything over ten thousand dollars. If you go back and look at all of my credit card transactions, all that have been published besides maybe the last few months, and twenty twenty wasn't a very active year because of the pandemic, so there wasn't much to publish. And I've answered these questions over and over again about, about use. And later on, we're going to discuss having another work session and hopefully coming up with a actual policy. But I hope, and what I want to say, is that that doesn't become that there's no flexibility and that there's one hundred percent control. I've said earlier, we had talked about each councillor having an individual budget. I don't think anyone is saying we went over budget. There's no way that we went over budget the last fiscal year for anything. And again, had there just been questions, even the gift card transactions that were talked about in this last, in the, the February third memo, I spoke directly to the finance director because I wasn't able to purchase the cars when I was trying to purchase them. At no point did anyone say, hey, anything. And that's problematic. And to, to be a part of a government where I have ignored so much since I've been here, Heather, you can breathe deeply if you want to, but I'm addressing this. Since I've been here, I walk down the halls sometimes before the pandemic, and there are employees that don't even want to speak, employees that are turned the other way. I've had some very difficult, not rude, but conversations with employees. And even when I wasn't treated well, even in this position that apparently people often want to say that I abused, I was still respectful to those employees. I'm not going to sit here and give examples, but I have those examples. And to have my colleagues, I don't know who knew. I've asked in the past few months about things that were happening amongst council, who knew who was present, and I haven't been given very clear answers. But to have this coming after how things have gone the last few months, it is shameful.
And as we, we had discussed earlier, I think that we're, all of our goal is that we align on a policy that everyone is highly, is aware of, and that puts, does not put our staffs in a position where they are having to review and approve any expenditures from any councillors. And I, I believe that's where there is consensus, and I hope that that's where ultimately our discussions get to. That certainly is the only objective that I, I understand.
Yes, but that was not your objective after this memo came out. Your next email said we need to have a closed session.
To talk about a policy.
Councillor Snook sent an email talking about I don't have a personal slush fund. That does not sound like either two people who are interested in solutions only. It's clear that you all thought that something had been done.
I'm happy to share the email that I sent. It acknowledges that we all want to be able to help our more vulnerable populations and those that are not able to have their voice at the table participate in the public dialogue. But there are processes that we need to follow in order for that to happen, or else we may collectively be facing some liabilities. And so I think that our priority right now, for our sake and for staff.
So are we facing our liability, Heather?
Policies.
No, we're not.
I'm saying in the future, now that there is an understanding that there are concerns, we need to have a policy in place and to be able to have a checks and balances system that does not place the onus on our subordinates.
Can I suggest that this is on the agenda at the end, after the public hearings, after the ordinances, after the resolutions, and that that's the appropriate time to continue this discussion?
There were people who spoke about this matter.
I understand, because obviously if we're going to discuss it in detail, it's going to take us an hour or so, but we've got other business that other people are waiting for. But we've got other business that other people are waiting for.
So we're clearly not discussing it.
We ought to get on and put it where it's, where it belongs on the agenda.
I was responding to people, comments, and to people who are listening to see what the comments are going to be. And I'm going to address it now for the people who are watching and may not be watching at the end. And as much you all have been able to dictate, this will not be one of them. It's not right, and you all need to do better.
Then if you want to talk about doing better, start with having a policy where counsel, as a whole, not individual counselors, spend money. You complained that I used the term slush fund, and that's exactly what I was discussing.
You haven't been here, one, long enough. You haven't even asked, ever asked me about any of these policies. I had to remind you back in March that you might want to save my number because we would have a lot of conversations over the next year and nine months.
And I do remember.
Come up with what you deem important, what you want to talk about, as long as you understand that it's never going to include you monitoring me just because it is me and that we're doing policies that, that we need to do because they are proper. That is two different things. And that is not what you've been doing today.
If you want to talk about what I was getting at with the term slush fund, you'll recall that back in January of last year, I asked whether there was a line item in the budget for any of our expenditures, any of those expenditures. And I was told that I was being either, I can't remember what you said, racist or white supremacist for asking. But in any event, shut down the discussion. So no, I've not had that further discussion with you.
Because again, that's a public discussion, and I'm sure the comments that I've had, that you, and I've had this conversation with Sina also, there is a difference between you being racist. And if you want to own that, that is your business. And me saying that your actions are upholding white supremacy and institutional racism. They are different things, and that's part of the things that we probably should discuss having a training on. Because I shouldn't have had to say that to anybody who ran in this city and is supposed to understand. There is not one time that I have said, Lloyd, you are racist. I have said that I don't think you would create a very different world than the world we're fighting right now. I've said that to you and to Heather.
You may not have called me a racist. You have directly called me a white supremacist.
Okay, well, show me.
I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me.
And the meeting that you're talking about is a very public meeting.
This is a point of order. I'm sorry, there are other things that are important that I would like to discuss on this agenda for the public that is engaged in important discussions. So I, I, I think we should move this into the end.
But as long as you understand, when you're running behind the scenes, setting the scenes for a lot of these things that have happened over the first few months, that's when you should be trying to have public discussions. Just you all do them in the background, and I am upfront, and I, I'm going to say it publicly, doesn't make you all better, Heather, or your actions better. Just because they're undercover and people don't see them, doesn't make them right. And just because I'll address you all publicly, instead of pretending, one, either that it didn't happen or that your actions are okay, doesn't make me wrong. So next up, we have a break at eight, which we're not there yet. So we wasn't behind schedule for any item, but we probably should take it now. So we can come back at 8:06?
All right, I'll call this meeting back to order. Um, just one more quick comment. I Mr. Gather's made a point about a citizen or two citizens who may be who died over the weekend. I hadn't heard anything about that. I am asking, but that's something that we definitely want to figure out how and what we can do to make sure that that doesn't, you know, that we can save people lives if there, if there's anything that we can do. So I'm interested in knowing, just finding out more about that.
And the reprogramming of 2019 CDBG funds for COVID-19 public services. And it's the first of two readings.
Okay, so tonight we will be discussing the CARES Act and the Charlottesville CDBG program. This item does involve a public hearing and a substantial action plan amendment for fiscal year 2020, 2021. According to the CARES Act, some CDBG program rules are modified for COVID emergency relief activities. So this includes CDBG 2019, 2020, and CDBG CV, so CDBG COVID funds, um, which are all subject to the modification. On January 14th, 2021, the city of Charlottesville was found to be noncompliant for the second consecutive year due to CDBG timeliness expenditure requirements. Corrective measures and sanctions were temporarily suspended during 2020 and for the first three months of 2021. Um, just based on government restrictions, closures, shelter in place restrictions, and social distancing guidance. HUD determined that all entitlement grantees across the nations had, across the nation, had factors beyond their reasonable control, which impacted carrying out CDBG activities in a timeliness manner. However, now HUD is beginning to resume back to normal operations. HUD noted that the city of Charlottesville is lacking timely performance as a deficiency. The city is now subject to the department's timeliness sanction policy. And HUD will conduct its final timeliness test on May 2nd, 2021. HUD and city staff met virtually through various different means to discuss options that we have, and HUD has recommended resources to assist the city to reach the May 2nd, 2021 timeliness deadline test. City staff has identified an immediate program for funding to solve the city's timeliness concerns by May 2nd. The city has unexpended 2019 CDBG entitlement funds totaling $244,950.82 from the delayed Belmont Franklin Street sidewalk activity. These funds can be reprogrammed back into the 2020, 2021 CDBG program budget to fund a COVID-related public service activity. Future CDBG funding sources can later repay the Belmont Franklin Street sidewalk construction funding or construction activity once the delays have been lifted. To meet timeliness deadlines by the timeliest deadline test by May 2nd, reprogram funds must be spent down within the next three-month period. Charlottesville Redevelopment and Housing Authority, so CRHA, CDBG CV III application was previously partially funded at the requested $320,000 application to fund a COVID rental relief program for CRHA residents. Staff and HUD identified CRHA's COVID rental relief application as an eligible activity for the city to quickly spend down the CDBG 2019 funds to meet timeliness requirements. CRHA's application went through the public participation process, received recommendation from funding from the CDBG and Home Task Force and Planning Commission, which allows the city to save time from having to undergo a new round of requests from proposals. City staff confirmed with CRHA staff on CDBG timeliness requirements to ensure HUD federal requirements will be met. All public housing residents are income eligible for CDBG program support. Funds are proposed to provide immediate COVID-19 rental assistance to public housing residents and cover rental payments. Approximately 313 households will be assisted through this program. Myself and Tim Mosh, the program project coordinator for the Franklin Street Sidewalk are available for any questions that you guys may have today.
Thank you. Are there any clarifying questions, councilors?
Is it, do you feel that the money will be able to be spent quickly enough?
Yes, there is a large enough need within the CRHA application.
Okay.
Are there any other questions? No? Okay, so we can open the public hearing.
If you'd like to speak to council on this topic, please click the raise hand icon in the Zoom webinar. You'll have up to three minutes. We have two people with their hands up right now. First is Brandon Collins. Brandon, you're on with council. Go ahead.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Brandon Collins. I am the lifelong resident of Charlottesville, and I'm also a staff member for FAR, the Public Housing Association of Residents. FAR is the federally recognized resident council and resident advisory board for public housing in Charlottesville. And I, we would like to just express our support for CRHA's application for rental relief through this CDBG process. As you know, COVID has been extremely difficult, particularly for our lowest-income residents, and rent relief is certainly a win-win for residents and for CRHA. It helps them continue to keep the bills paid, and it helps residents continue to be housed and be safe. So I highly encourage you to approve this, and I would just also offer over at FAR, we greatly appreciate the mayor's firm attention to issues regarding COVID and issues of public housing in Charlottesville. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Peter Krebs. Peter, you're on with council. You've got three minutes.
Good evening. I'm Peter Krebs. I live on Tufton Avenue here in the city. I was on the Belmont CDBG task force that originally I came up with that Franklin Street Sidewalk project. First of all, I'd like to just express my support to council and staff to definitely make sure that those monies are kept in Charlottesville and get into the community. Absolutely. I will say that that project sort of seems to have fallen through the cracks between Tierra and you know, Aaron's transition. So that, that project is critically important. Lots of residents, really tons of kids, live in that area. The Franklin Sidewalk project is essential, and I just hope that the city does not let that fall permanently off the radar. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Walker, I don't see any other hands.
All right. Thank you. So we'll close the public hearing. Counselor, discussion?
Ms. Tacker, just want to reiterate what I was reading in the memo. I think what you said, just in response to Mr. Krebs, that the intention is that when funding becomes available in the future, that it will go return back to this project. And can you comment on why there might have been delays in implementing that project?
Yeah, actually, I might be better able to answer some of the delays. They were a lot to do with stormwater engineering. Tim, do you want to help me on that?
I saw him on there earlier.
I did too. If not, I could.
Anyway, the main question is just to reiterate that the intention is that this project will be pursued in future funding.
Yes, so a future funding, future CDBG funding source will be put back into the Franklin Street pot. The majority of the delays were due to contractor work. The design, stormwater engineering, and COVID were the three big ones. Right now, we're having a lot of issues achieving right-of-way. Yeah, right-of-way is our big concern. We have reached out to the Belmont Carlton Neighborhood Association and the Belmont CDBG Task Force with help on this, and they are pretty motivated to help help, help the city with right-of-way on this. But yes, a future CDBG funding source will be put back into the Franklin Street sidewalk.
Mr. Mosh did able, he was able to get back on.
Can you hear me at this point?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Yeah. The stormwater management has been, has been quite quite challenging in that it's right against a flood, a flood plain that is, in some cases, is actually in the street, the floodplain line. Linear projects don't don't lend themselves well to stormwater management in that they're not able to capture all of their runoff very well. The city has been struggling with that in a number of projects and has appeared to turn the corner in, in the way they treat particularly water quality to the point where now sidewalk projects can be more easily compliant with regulations. The other aspect of the right-of-way acquisition, last summer, we had sent out certified letters to all of the property owners that were impacted and received really only two responses from the, I believe, seven that were sent out. We sent additional letters out, again, certified mail. And we have heard back from three more, so we, we feel as if we're, we're making some progress there. It's, it's a matter really just of continuing to push on it. I think that going with the Belmont Carlton Neighborhood meeting where it was discussed briefly, that helped. Within, within a week after that, we did get those additional three responses.
Thank you both.
Any other comments or questions? All right. So we'll move this to the March 1st consent agenda if there's agreement. All right. Thanks. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have a local COVID ordinance status review. Your counselor, Snook, is going to present.
Madam Mayor, this issue is one that we have addressed a number of times, beginning with I guess, last July, when we passed a COVID ordinance that was intended, I think, to, to keep us pretty much in sync with the governor and without Marl County, so that people would know whether they're in the city or the county, what, what they can and cannot do. The issue has come to us recently because it's been called to our attention, particularly by folks in the Little League, that in fact, this is, this has not been successful in trying to keep the city and the county aligned. Of course, our Little Leagues, we have three Little Leagues that are active. They draw from both the city and the county. They practice in both the city and the county. They play games in both the city and the county. Some of them play games, play some games in the city and some games in the county. So it's a source of, of a lot of confusion. The confusion right now is that under at least some interpretations and the interpretation they've been using, they are not allowed to, although they're allowed to practice in the city, they are not allowed to play their games in the city. And certainly McIntyre Little League plays at McIntyre Park. That's in the city. Monticello Little League plays in Quarry Road Park. That's in the city. Central Little League plays in Penn Park, which is city property, but it is actually in the county. So trying to figure out which jurisdictional rules apply has been rather difficult. They, they asked us, please, to come up with a, a decision on how they might be able to, to do this. And a couple of suggestions have been made by Ms. Robertson. The first suggestion was simply a, an amendment to the ordinance. And the amendment to the ordinance would really just accomplish one thing. It would change the definition of gathering to eliminate, among other things, the definition of, or to eliminate the specification of a sporting event. And at that point, I think her interpretation is that we would then be back to where sporting events such as this would be under the control of the governor's orders, which would allow not only the games to go forward, but also a limited number, this is for outdoor games, a limited number of of spectators, two per participant or something like that. The other possibility I have suggested back in December, and council voted against this three to two, I had suggested simply repealing our ordinance so that we didn't have to deal with this every month, every two months, to try to, to keep in sync with, with what the governor is, is doing. So is, we have these two proposals. One would apply simply to the, the question of gathering and sporting events. The other would simply repeal the ordinance and put us under the control of the governor. So that's, that's where we stand. Is, is this set as a public hearing?
No, it's not.
So that, that is the discussion. That's my introduction to the discussion. Lean at that. Happy to, to discuss the issue further. Maybe Ms. Robertson or somebody else may be able to, to try and chime in with some other perspectives.
And I'll just say quickly, just for council to note, I was one of those three opposed to the changes initially, and I spoke with JJ Davis earlier, and since that conversation, they have released where they are, students are having more restrictive measures because of their numbers. And so I know that there are things that are, all of our families want to do, and but I just hope whatever we do that we think about not just the that families desire to resume their normal activities and also think about the employees that will be impacted. And if any of those employees are not full-time benefited staff that will be brought back as a result of us making these changes, that we need to have a very serious and in-depth conversation about the fact that these are people who may or may not have even had a job since they were laid off here without having access to vaccinations, without having medical insurance. If they are brought back on because we opened something up that they are, we are putting them in very high-risk situations, and we're not giving them much to protect themselves. I don't know who is at the Little League fields, but I know there have been conversations, not just about the Little League fields, but the swimming pools and all of that stuff, and they are very high-risk environments. And if we're going to send employees into those, that we need to be more thoughtful about how to ensure their safety and not just if we have Plexiglas and stuff like that up.
And let me say, we, we have in fact gotten a lot of letters, emails also about the Jefferson Swim League, and in particular about the city swordfish team that practices and swims at Washington Park. I would say I don't know that there is very much of a requirement of really staff time in, associated with Little League. Have to, I guess, empty the trash cans a couple of times a week, something like that. There clearly would be a much greater involvement of, of staff and in an indoor setting under some circumstances, perhaps for the city swordfish. Although they practice at Washington Park, I don't know whether they ever swim indoors. But in any event, the, the governor, the amendment to the ordinance would the, the governor, the amendment to the ordinance would simply read gathering includes, but is not limited to parties, celebrations or other social events, whether they occur indoors or outdoors. And then it's the governor's rules that apply as to what, what the standards would be for indoors or outdoors. This would simply, this amendment would simply take sporting events out of the situation of being specially treated by Charlottesville. I'll say, I also completely agree with your comment about wanting to make sure that if we've got more parks and rec employees, particularly ones who may be working at the pools and so on, that those parks and recs and rec employees need to be treated fairly and they need to be treated with some sensitivity, given the risks to which they may be exposed. I think most of us on council have expressed at some point or another concern about not understanding why we have such a thing as part-time temporary employees who have been part-time temporary employees for 10 years or more. There's some aspects of all these policies that need to have sense made out of them and they need to be, and the sense needs to be brought to them with a sense of fairness to the employees. Because after, you know, after nine months or so, I think you begin to think, hey, I'm, why am I not a full-time employee? Why am I not getting the protections and the benefits of other full-time employees? So I, I agree. I think that's a separate problem. But it's one that you're right in bringing up and calling to our attention and saying that we're going to have to address.
So I'm thinking about if we, if we do Little League and then are we just saying if there are programs that the city isn't running? If, I'm sure that Mr. Brown will be asked about like basketball, volleyball, like there are other things that the city also participates in. And I don't know what that list looks like. And so Ms. Robertson, A be considered or is it just, would it just be per contracts that we have with outside entities?
So if you adopt the ordinance, the attachment A, which is to revise the wording of gathering, what you will, what you would do is bring yourselves into sort of parallel with the governor's orders. And so recreational sports would be allowed within the city generally. But as to city-run programs, if the city wishes to have different or bring different sports, so the city organization could regulate which sports open up and when internally. Because that would be a more restrictive provision than would otherwise be allowed. So this ordinance would just say we're deferring to the governor's executive order on the issue of recreational sports. But that doesn't mean that internally, the city itself, as to city-run programs or programs that the city controls, that the city could not make some choices about which ones should be recommenced sooner rather than later.
I just think once we put there that those are questions that our staff are probably going to get.
I note that Mr. Brown is, is on, is on the call here, so to speak. I wonder if there's anything he would like to add to this discussion?
Yes, and thank you. Um, yes, Little League is just the start of it. I mean, as soon as, if it is approved that they can have games, we do expect that, you know, adult softball, basketball, volleyball, pools, all those same conversations, camps, everything, you know, this probably will be the trigger of whatnot. We are going back to more of our full programs coming this spring. And we do run our own leagues, you know, Little League, yes, it's run separately, but all, most of the other leagues are run by the city.
Mr. Brown, do you have concerns?
Oh, sure do. Yes, ma'am. I do have concerns, yes, my kids also played, you know, new sports, so I do have concerns on the health of the, the athletes and the coaches. Do have concerns on the other side of the coin of, you know, how harmful is it if they sit out another season? You know, so I don't have the perfect answer, as none of us do. I think, you know, just personally, I'm probably, you know, my daughter did play varsity basketball this year. It was a, a risk that we decided to take. The season did get shut down. Luckily she didn't, wasn't positive, but you know, just me personally, I think we're too, making those personal decisions of you want your kid in there or not. And I'm kind of just reiterating what's already been said to us, probably it's getting almost daily. And again, with all the sports, there are all different facilities, all are different programs. And when you kind of say, you know, you pick one or the other, the other ones are really jumping. That's not fair. You know, why, why do they get to do it? We don't get to do it. So we got a really good mess going on right now. Don't quite sure know, you know, the answer. And to the mayor's point, you know, we do know, we do need to work on the way in which our part-time temp staff, seasonal, whatever you want to call them, are handled, clouded, categorized and, you know, benefited. And we'll, we'll be glad to sit down, do a work session or anything council would like to be involved with that. We'd like to get that taken care of too.
Thank you. Yeah, that's, that's, I've been concerned about that as well and hoping that we could use this time to make sure as we're bringing people back that we're addressing a very longstanding issue you inherited.
We already have complications in the city because soccer through Soca is taking place in game form on city fields from their agreement. And so I think we're already kind of in, in that realm of complexity and and I think it's a slippery slope to not like open it up to something that I, I mean, I, I think, my daughter does play soccer, full disclosure there. And she did play on the city field and that's what made me realize that that was allowed. And I was confused as to why they weren't able to, to have their games in the city for the, the baseball side. And my son plays in a lacrosse clinic, which isn't games, but and I, I just can see the benefit for my children to be able to have that outlet right now when they're basically at home 24/7 has been a, a risk that our family has personally decided to take because we just felt like the benefits far outweighed the risks for their mental health and just getting out there and having some kind of social interaction. And so I would be hypocrite not to, to express like my support for allowing for more children to be able to be playing safely in, in, in their sports. And I agree that I think the indoors is a whole different ballgame. I know Mr. Blair was considering that over the winter months. I certainly understood the risks that come with that. But I think especially when we think about this, the games for this sport are going to be in the March into April timeframe. And that still is a ways off and, and just where we are in terms of making progress with vaccines. And again, just not, this is something that they can limit attendance to. I, I just feel that opening up some of these opportunities that are, are less risk, I, I'm, I'm in support of. And so I would, I would be in support of making amendment. And I think it's also important that we're consistent with Albemarle. There's just so much crossover for, for the kids that are playing. And in this, in this case, the leagues are, are splitting the fields and it just doesn't make sense for us to have that consistency.
Well, I guess my thoughts on it. You know, I think I'd you know, tend to support the amendment as well, just because I think, you know, we're we're entering, you know, a period and that's only going to continue over the coming months where there's just a lot of confusion. I mean, we've got schools returning to in-person. You've got some private outdoor recreational events in the city. You've got the county doing more full outdoor recreational events. And I just think it will be important to try to get our policies in alignment because I think to the extent that there's confusion over a mismatch of what exactly the policy is on a city-owned field versus a private one versus you're in the county versus what the governor's order, that confusion, I think, makes you know, can create in and of itself create an issue with compliance because people are just sure what the policies are. I think they're more effective if there's more alignment and clarity about exactly what they are. In addition, I think by, you know, aligning with the governor's orders on out, you know, these outdoor recreational activities. It's not just opening everything up. I mean, it's still governed by the governor's restrictions and should the situation of cases change. You know, those could become more restrictive as necessary. So there are still some restrictions and like procedures in place. Even after just amending it to be in alignment with the governor's orders. So that's sort of what I'm thinking about it.
I think we also, also, I also have to recognize the governor's last order, which he issued at the end of January, which still keeps keeps us able to have sporting events with up to a certain number of spectators and so on. Was written at a time when he says that Virginia's positivity rate is 12.5%. It's now down in the 9% range. And in Charlottesville, it's about 2.3%. In Albemarle, it's about 3.4%. The University of Virginia with the recent spike in cases, but they've now, they're up around 1.4, 1.5% in positivity rate. There is little evidence at this point that suggests that children are themselves a sort of a super spreader or that child activities are super spreader events. Admittedly, the science is not real clear on this. But and it's, it's sort of, you know, how do you prove a negative? Well, we, what we have not seen is much, much suggestion that children, particularly under the age of 12 or 14 or so, it's, it's older teens get to be more of a problem. But younger kids are not much of a problem for the spread of disease. My personal reason for wanting to simply repeal our ordinance is that the governor can act faster than we can act and can act in consultation with people who know a lot more epidemiology than as far as I know, anybody on the city staff possesses. So, but if, if y'all don't want to go that way, certainly the attachment A, the amendment that Ms. Robertson has aired would, would allow youth sports to, to resume.
And I just would like to, the city's basketball team had to shut down their season because of COVID. I think before, was it the last two games or last game? Mr. Bulls, I don't know if you know which game it was before, but I know that that was.
Yes, ma'am. They, they were in the playoffs and a team they played in the first game of the playoffs tested positive, which ended CHS's season.
But no CHS person actually seems to have gotten the disease.
And UVA, what they just released earlier says all in-person events and gatherings on or off grounds as defined by policy section 045 are prohibited and should be moved online. These restrictions take a place, take effect at 7:00 PM today. We recognize that many of you already have plans this evening. Please either cancel them or move them online. This includes social gatherings, clubs, organizational functions and other in-person interactions that do not meet the exclusion set in the same section. So, and they have a lot of other bullet points on here. So if something is happening, if they are taking those measures at this time. So are there any other? All right, so is there a motion?
So it's, Councilor McGill, did you want to chime in?
I guess I'm more comfortable lining up with Albemarle just to make it clearer. Again, because half the time people don't know if they're in the county or in the city.
All right, I can make a motion then. I'm I guess I just do it to the amendment, Mr. Robertson. I move that we amend the current ordinance.
Yes. You would make a motion? Yes.
So I move that we amend the current ordinance to clarify for recreational sports. Go ahead. I can just read it off the top of the title of it. At least I'm sorry, you're delayed. So I'm just going to make a motion that we amend the current ordinance.
Yeah, or as set forth attachment A to the agenda material.
I'm, I move that we amend the current ordinance as set forth in attachment A in the, in the agenda materials. That's it.
I will second the motion. I, I will note from Ms. Councilor McGill's benefit that the amendment that we're proposing basically tracks the Albemarle County language. So it brings us into sync with, with the county.
And I just want to make sure that like Mr. Brown said, that this will start a chain reaction possibly, that we are not saying that we want internally or externally activities open just because of this ordinance. That will that be a further discussion? Is that the agreement?
I, I think it would be clear that the Parks and Rec Department would still be empowered to make their decisions on a perhaps a sport-by-sport basis. But that we as a council don't have to be involved in that decision. It's, it's Mr. Brown's decision and his staff's decision, I think, is the way it would be left.
But we haven't had the discussion about how to take care of our employees.
That's true.
For their safety. So I want to make sure that we know that people have been calling since the pandemic started. And so based on what you said, you would be, it would be up to Mr. Balls, Mr. Brown to say yea or nay every time. And I don't think that's fair. We were just talking about that earlier, what is fair to place on the burden on staff. And I don't think as having been an employee in that division before, that they're going to get a lot of calls because everyone is willing to take those chances. And so you're going to have them also making decisions about staffing and we haven't fixed anything yet.
So the alternative, the alternative would be for council to get involved in deciding volleyball, yes, basketball, no. Soccer, yes, softball, no. And that doesn't make any sense to me. I mean, I think the issue has to be an administrative one for the city manager and the Parks and Rec Director. And to understand how they're going to address budgetary concerns, you know, how are they going to staff what they need to staff? Can they afford to staff what they would need to staff? And those are, those are management decisions, not council decisions, seems to me.
No, we approve the budget for them to. So we know that there were already issues with maintaining staffing of people who were most vulnerable in the city and that we are already said, we don't have the money to do that and we fire people. So to say if you can figure out how to hire people, you can hire them back. But yeah, they may still not have health insurance or they may not have access to the vaccine because they're not considered essential. When we're making them essential is not fair. So I think we need to have further conversation before we just make this blanket across the board administrative decisions only.
Well, that, that's not a, a part of this proposed amendment to the COVID ordinance. But I do agree, it's a conversation that needs to be had. Let's say it's, it's not a part of, of this particular motion.
Okay, I just want to, that's what I'm asking for clarification on, just because of the statement made that we will have a broader conversation about what the city can afford to open back up. And if we are saying everything that we will then say commit to fixing a problem we haven't fixed in decades. Because it wouldn't be fair to those employees to bring them back in very high-risk situation because our Because it wouldn't be fair to those employees to bring them back in very high risk situation because our citizens want to take the chance. We are then also saying that they are choosing to take the chance and what they're probably choosing to do is to earn money they need to take care of themselves. Not that they want to be in the high risk environment. So I just think that we need to have further discussions about that and make sure that we understand what we're signing on to and not just place that burden on staff.
And my point is simply that this ordinance, as amended, places no burdens on staff.
But you just said that Mr. Brown could decide and you thought that it was administrative. That's all I'm trying to clear up because I just sure, make sure that it's clear to staff. So was there a second?
Yes, I seconded.
All right, Ms. Thomas.
Mayor Walker.
Um, no.
Vice Mayor McGill.
Yes.
Counselor Hill?
Yes.
Counselor Payne?
Yes.
Counselor Snup?
Yes.
Thank you. That carries four to one. All right, next up, we have the Regional Equity Joint Memorandum of Understanding. It's one reading.
Good evening, everybody. This is Kaky Dimak, Director of Human Services. And I would like to present to you the slightly revised version of the joint MOU on equity and inclusion. You all were introduced to this MOU a couple of times electronically and then at the joint meeting between the County of Almarle, UVA and the city on October twenty eighth, twenty twenty. There was pretty broad, widespread support for the concept of the MOU, which is based on recent MOUs of both two thousand sixteen and two thousand seventeen between the city and the county and the areas of transportation, education, environment, and housing. This continues that tradition and includes the University of Virginia in that. One of the comments that we heard most strongly at that meeting was the desire for immediate action oriented activities related to the MOU as soon as it was adopted. The county is considering the MOU tomorrow at their regular meeting, and I believe the University of Virginia is considering it this week as well. The MOU expresses a commitment to providing quality services to all members of the community, promoting an equitable and welcoming community by increasing accessibility, promoting unity and honoring diversity, acknowledges a shared responsibility for advancing equity and inclusion and recognition of collaboration as a means for achieving meaningful results. It specifies that we will evaluate current programs and policies and modify to address any deficiencies found. But we'll collectively invest in programs and initiatives that will set measurable goals and monitor progress of diversity, equity, and inclusion efforts. Use available tools to support data informed decision making in all three organizations. deepen our commitment to improved inclusivity and equity in all the communities we serve. Evaluate our services and relationships specifically through an equity lens. Identify underserved communities through outreach and community partnership. Implement programs and develop partnerships that close opportunity gaps. Work to achieve alignment in both priorities and strategies employed to improve regional outcomes and designate resources, including staff, to promote the success. In keeping with what we perceived as our charge after the joint meeting in October, Kevin McDonald from the University of Virginia, Siri Russell from the county, and I have met on several occasions to talk about potential initiatives that would move these commitments back. We've both explored what was already in process or in motion in any one of our organizations and also done some quick feasibility studies to look at costs and timelines. Under consideration, initially, we include improving mental health services, expanding financial opportunities, increasing human service and human rights programming, adopting a regional tribal consultation policy and investing in permanent supportive housing. There's a, there's a long list of possibilities for us in terms of this collaboration. We'll have the opportunity to talk again on Friday at a meeting between the city, county, and University of Virginia staff. As soon as we have what we think are some viable possibilities for you, we'll come back to our respective organizations and present them as options for moving forward to action as quickly as possible. Are there any questions?
Any questions?
Was this the, I think it was back in July that we had, when we had that meeting that lasted till two in the morning? Was this the, was that the genesis of this effort?
It was not. The genesis of this effort actually began with a brainchild from Siri Russell after she worked on the equity MOUs early on around transportation and economic development as part of the county and thought there is enough conversation happening in all three organizations around equity. What would happen if we joined forces together? So this lives in her brain first with lots of shared support from many others.
Thank you. If I remember correctly, I believe a lot of time we as council discussed it was at that joint meeting with Almarle County and UVA, and it was that meeting we most recently discussed it.
True.
All right, any other?
Oh, no, because I have no additional questions that I didn't raise at that previous meeting.
Right. Is there a motion?
I would move that we approve the joint MOU on equity and inclusion and authorize the mayor to sign it.
All right, any discussion? And I'll just say thank you all for the work that you all have done on this, and I'm hoping that we're able to accomplish some of these goals, the working, all three organizations working together. Ms. Thomas?
Mayor Walker.
Um, yes.
Vice Mayor McGill.
Yes, ma'am.
Counselor Hill?
Yes.
Counselor Payne?
Yes.
Counselor Snup?
Yes.
Thank you. That carries five oh. Have a good evening.
Thanks very much.
All right, next up, we have the interrupt the balance donation. And we talked about this at the last meeting. And Counselor, former Counselor Bellamy talked about it earlier. He attended the training today to observe and figure out, he's been working with Kevin McDonald of UVA too, to try to also get support for the you know, for the community members and again, we, we all know that we had uptick in shots fired, I think, starting in November of maybe twenty nineteen that went on until well, there were some shots fired on the on the website from the past week also. But I think everyone would be in agreement that there has been a considerable reduction even without these official trainings and the organizations being you know, official, that there's been a great effort between three different set of individuals to figure out how to you know, communicate with each other, individuals who did not necessarily get along in the past, who have come together to solve this, you know, major community issue. Having to have that many conversations, I know I've been told by some of the men who are a part of building this with mothers and sisters and brothers and girlfriends and kids about family members lives being taken has been been devastating. And I've said before, this isn't new, but the way and the frequency that it was happening was definitely new. We have all can make a list of people who have been killed since we were young. And it's one of the things that has always been why this work has always been a passion for me because I've seen like the devastation that it plays for a long time and family members who never recover from losing family members. So this is definitely the way things were happening a few months back is definitely something that no one deserves to go through. And so I'm glad that all of my colleagues were definitely supportive. I know they, there have been many conversations with the community members trying to figure out how to be you know, supportive you know, of this initiative now and moving forward. So I know that everyone is very thankful, thankful thankful for that. My tablet just went out. I'm trying to, I'll give specifics. So this would, I don't see, and I don't have in front of me the total, but I would like to tell the public the amount that we're talking about. Miss the six, six thousand and then the fourteen thousand. So is it twenty, twenty thousand total? That was the full amount?
I haven't heard from anybody what a proposed bottom line dollar figure was. So I, I left it as blank so you all could decide that. I, I know there were a couple of different numbers discussed.
In your first proposal, I believe there was something about fourteen thousand, six thousand, then ten thousand coming later possibly needed. Then it'd be thirty. That's where I came up with the thirty at one point when I was.
In the emails.
Yeah.
No, the amount was, they had raised sixteen thousand from other organizations. Fourteen thousand, we would cover. Thirty thousand dollars total for the training. And then there was additional six thousand dollar request for stipends for them participants. Two people attending the training that would not receive stipends, that would be former Counselor Bellamy and then the Home to Hope employees are also attending and will not receive stipends. Were for participants, but those individuals, I'm pulling it up now. I thought that was.
But the funding we're allocating, whatever number amount, is just going to the five oh one three C and then they are going to determine how to distribute the funds to support the training needs.
Yeah. And I, but to make sure that that was clear, I do have one request. They thought that they had meals covered for the three days. And they don't. We were able to get late today. You know, the, I guess whoever had agreed to do that, but there is to see if we would be amendable to amending that twenty thousand dollars and adding adding additional three days at a hundred and sixty dollars per day for twenty people, eight dollars per person. Royalty says agreed to cover the mills at that amount, if that's something that we would be willing to do.
I guess this is kind of why I was suggesting thirty thousand to begin with was that way it, it's the lump and we let people use the money the way they need to use it to support this work the best.
I know, I think we're just having to specify that it's just to go towards this training.
Yeah.
And so the training is either, you know, the either direct or indirect direct payments, sorry, sorry, needs to support this training. And so I think we probably should be a little more specific. So at twenty thousand, whatever she's saying, twenty thousand, and then the meals is certainly part of the training. But again, this, this goes to the nonprofit and then they determine how to disperse the funds as long, but we just, in our, in our resolution, it does reference that it has to be tied to the training.
Yeah, so it would be twenty thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars. No, twenty thousand, four hundred and eighty. Did I say four thousand?
No.
You're right.
Twenty, twenty thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars.
That's all they need. I'm fine with that. I was trying to give more.
All right, so that's the amount that would go into the motion. It'd be twenty thousand, four hundred and eighty.
All right, are we ready for it?
Yes.
I move we draft a resolution allocating city council strategic initiatives funding to support the interrupt the violence training program provided to city residents. And as Mayor Walker stated it, in the amount of twenty thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars allocated from that fund.
Second.
All right, any further questions? All right, Ms. Thomas.
Mayor Walker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McGill?
Yes.
Counselor Hill?
Yes.
Counselor Payne?
Yes.
Counselor Snup?
Yes.
All right, thank you. That carries five. Next up, we have a report, the honorary street designation policy and marker update.
I want now Brian, do you have me? Live from my my den. We can see you and hear you. And Rachel Lloyd, the Chair of Historic Resources Committee, I, I think trying to and she's on as well. Beautiful. Thank you very much. Good evening, y'all. How are you tonight? The last, Jeff Warner, I'm, I'm your preservation and design staff within neighborhood development services. And last September, you all had asked the the district resources committee to review and make recommendations on the policies and the process for the honorary street designation program that the city has, I think, had for some time. The committee discussed the matter at its regular meetings on October ninth, twenty twenty, November thirteenth, twenty twenty, and briefly on December eleventh, twenty twenty. And I apologize, the letter's a little late. We had a snafu and and how it got sent up. But either way, you have a letter attached to the staff report with some additional notes that summarizes the Historic Resources Committee. Their discussion, some recommendations, some thoughts, both on the policy and the program and also on you would ask some thoughts on some of the individual applications that you had gotten. And I, and I also included in the staff report just a brief reference to, I know that Mr. Brown at Public Works has, was looking at various options. So there's a graphic in the staff report. Just the idea being that the, the signs that the honorary names that were posted on top of the street signs that there's, there's been some confusion. So I'll address that. But they were looking at it independently of what this district resources committee did and not anything wrong with what they recommended, but I I incorporated that here by reference. And I think he may be available this evening also to discuss that, but I I have Rachel Lloyd here, again, the chair with the district resources committee. I guess the question would be, and have you, if you have any questions about what the committee offered, Ms. Lloyd can certainly discuss those with you, and that was the intent here. I didn't think we needed to go through and read it, maybe just have a conversation led by council. So with that, Mayor Walker handed over to you and Ms. Lloyd.
All right, thank you. Questions?
No, I just wanted to thank the committee very much for putting this together and spending the time to go through it and kind of think through the actual process.
I'll second that and note that this is the sort of deliberate deliberation that I think we were hoping for when we sent this over to the Historic Resource Commission. that I think we were hoping for when we sent this over to the Historic Resource Commission. Uh, and I'm I'm glad to receive it. Thank you very much.
Did, uh, I had one question about um the designation uh for Henry Martin Way. Just because it was it was recommended to us to approve it. And then in the notes, um, there's comment from two commission members who had just raised concerns that um unlike the other requests, that one did not come from um residents living on the street and did not have engagement um with the the individuals living in that neighborhood. Um, was it just a matter of the you know, majority of the committee voting to approve it, or was there further kind of discussion or consideration? Um, because I just know that's the only one where there were some notes expressing um.
All right. Well, let me give a, I'll give a clarification and I hand it off to Rachel. I was actually at my 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 son's. They finally had his college graduation in November. So we, I was not at this meeting that they had, but just to be clear, uh, you know, the Historic Resources Committee, um, to to my knowledge, has never been directly involved with the the street naming process. So um, so the comments that were offered were sort of in a, in the sense of um all right, well, here's, if if council's considering it, here's one point um to point out, but it 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 wasn't the, it's never been seen as the council or the committee's responsibility sort of to have gone out and 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 solicit. So that, just so we're clear on that. And then Rachel, if you could go ahead and drop, jump in on what was was discussed specifically.
Or, well, there were um nuances uh to all of the, all of the applications and suggestions that the committee had to improve the process. And so some of the conversation that came out of the Henry Martin application um is reflected in the additional recommendations that we provided to council, including the recommendation um uh for applicants to uh uh look for letters of support from descendants or from neighbors for future applications. Um, it wasn't a hundred percent clear to us that that had occurred or had not occurred for the Henry Martin application. Um, it it wasn't indicated strongly in the application package. Some of the other applications did have several um letters of recommendation um from members of the community or neighbors or descendants. So uh, anyway, a couple of members of the committee just wanted to make sure that council was aware of the debate that had occurred around that particular application. And um, and as I said, we did reflect some of that debate in the additional recommending, recommendations that we provided to you all for um kind of streamlining or improving the process going forward.
The sense was, and I think that, and I was there to kind of liaise, I didn't participate in the the dialogue, but um was that we were asking them to both look at the process, but also look at the applications that were current. And I think it was kind of challenging to kind of handle both at once, because I think had the process been reflective of what the recommendations are, the assessment of all the applications might be different, you know, moving forward. But I think there was just a sensitivity around, well, these applications were submitted during a process that was already established. And so in parallel, you're asking us to establish what makes recommendations for a new process and how it will be evaluated. But you're now also asking us to to look at these specific requests. Um, and so I think it's up to council to decide if we want to actually look, look at these recommendations that they're giving in terms of the process and then look through the lens of those recommendations relative to these these what has been required, applied for so far. And so I'm not sure what the scope of what we want to accomplish tonight, but I I do know that there has been interest in councillor McGill and I have discussed at some point probably after, obviously after budget cycle. It might be worth us, you know, also just convening with Historic Resources Committee on a more broader scale to talk about like what their mission and their scope is, because over the next few years, I can see a lot of important decisions being made um on this front. And I think it's going to be helpful for them to have clarity around, you know, what what the direction is from council for their work. Um, it's not so much a much more broader conversation, but for now, I think there is a lot in front of us and I'm not sure how we want to process those recommendations and have to maybe then turn that into you know, a policy of sorts for how we're going to evaluate names. I don't think we're going to accomplish all that tonight by any means, but I think this was just a way to kind of introduce the output coming from the committee and where they landed on some of the current applications there are. But I think that it would be their their recommendation also just to consider the procedural changes in light of making any final decisions. Is that right, Ms. Lloyd?
I believe that is a fair representation of the committee's um general opinion about that. Yes.
And I, that was a hard um ask, request from them anyway, because it was a very um you know, contentious issue around the names that we kind of threw in there a lot. So and that's why I just recommended it, even if we wanted them to look at the policy and change it for the future. This is something that we should have um handled um instead of um sending it on, uh, you know, in the in the first place. So I would recommend that in the future, when we know we have um these um topics that have a lot of community feedback and that's going to land, you know, end up back with us anyway, that we should do that work if they had, if any advisory board hasn't been a part of the process the entire um that the entire time. I just don't think it was fair, um, fair to them. So that's the first thing. And then I know in terms of especially uh Mr. Alexander and the Black History Pathway is something that he was particularly interested in us um voting on during Black History Month. Um, and so if there is a way that we can make um that happen, um, since it is with the recommendation, um then um unless we are then going to say that what was recommended to us, we're not going to, you know, do um, that if we can, you know, do that tonight, because we're, our next meeting will be March, then I that I would um, you know, request that.
And I would say, you know, I'm definitely comfortable with with that and comfortable with the recommendations in general as well, um particularly like these immediate ones, but then the more like mid to long term piece of like um having like a um commission that looks at the city as a whole, engaging with the Monika Nation. Looking, you know, there's things around looking at like a permanent state marker for Gregory Swanson, et cetera. I know we're not going to do that tonight, but I definitely think those are worth pursuing long term.
And sort of align with the Blue Ribbon Commission.
Right.
And Asian. So Ms. Robertson, is there, if there's agreement to move forward tonight, is because we don't have this listed as a um we just has it have it as a no vote or in discussion? We don't even have it as a no vote, just a discussion. Is there a way for us to vote on this tonight or do we need to wait?
Um, so long as it doesn't require a public hearing, I suppose you all could uh make a motion to amend your agenda and add it as a a voting item. Um, what would specifically um would you like to vote on though? Is it, is there something that needs?
Yeah, so I think the recommendation, the approved, the following name request, there are five um names with the um street recommendations there. Four doesn't.
Yeah, and I think so, unless you would prefer to have a a formal resolution prepared. You know, as long as your motion is is specific, you you could do that.
I know.
I'm sorry. I was gonna say we might have both meetings this week, huh?
Oh, go ahead.
I think the other options are, we're going to have a closed meeting for those interviews, so we could have a resolution that we read in an open session. I'm just thinking about other options we might have this week to take care of this. But but if we want to go through the motion of changing agenda, um.
I think we also have a problem though in that uh Villa Poggio Arcano doesn't even designate what street we're talking about.
It's identify one, right?
I do have some pause just in general that we would take action on something that we didn't say we're going to take action on, because it was identified as a report. So even if we could do it later in the week um through that process.
It's also one of the things we got a lot of comment on, a lot of public comment on.
So that's fine if we do it later this week. Are we going to um do all of them except item four or? So we're doing one, two, three, and five? Um, what are we asking staff to prepare? Because there hasn't been a street identified for um item four.
I I don't know what ones were identified uh in the, in the application. And I don't know what anybody might have in mind as the street that is closer, you know, something closer to the street's name for other sister cities. I don't, I I frankly think I I I'm not a fan of just having, just bringing it up at the earliest possible meeting. Again, because this is something that had a fair amount of public comment on and people wanted to talk about it. And I assume that they're going to still want to talk about it. And I don't understand why we can't just take it up at our first meeting in March. In the meantime, we can figure out what the right answer is for the Villa Poggio Arcano.
I don't disagree about the timeline in general. I just, I just had heard the mayor say something specific about acknowledging at least the first one during Black History Month, which is why I was, what was weighing.
Okay. I I I can understand that, that that might be it. Uh, and and that is a specific proposal that had specific public comment attached to it. Supposing we just did that and then took the other, took up the other four first meeting in March.
I'm good with that. So that Black History Pathway could be named during Black History.
Black History Month. Yeah, sure.
Um, I'm fine with that as well as additionally fine. Um, you know, I'd be comfortable moving forward with some of the others, but either way, it's fine with me.
I don't, and I do think that the number five, the buyer's Snooki Way, you know, we started talking about that in honoring a Mr. Byers who had been the swim coach and passed away. Um, I don't think there, and that is the area around the Washington Park Pool. So I don't think there would be much changes happening um with that location because it wanted to honor where he spent a a lot of time. Um, at the spaces he spent a lot of time. He was at all of the um rec centers, but but either. So would you all be opposed to those two or you just want to do the first one and then the other four?
I guess one of the questions that we we should at least acknowledge is whether the concerns that were raised by the two dissenting members concerning Henry Martin Way, whether those are concerns that we want to listen to, whether we want to follow or whether we want to essentially overrule. Whether they're legitimate concerns, whether they uh, whether they carry the day is a different issue. But I think we need to at least acknowledge the issues that that Jordy Jaeger and uh Jeff Varner. Who was it? I can't remember. Phil Varner uh at least acknowledged their issues.
Yeah.
Well, I would, I say, I, I guess I, you know, I would, I would be in support of Mayor Walker's recommendation of you know, this week, moving forward with one and five. In, you know, it says others which had really the questions about either the street location. The level of engagement Gregory Swanson Way, there's also some question about like a s- permanent state marker. Um, so it seems like those ones, you know, could have greater community engagement or work some of these things out, but certainly one and five. I mean, it seems like it's pretty clear cut and, you know, I don't see any reason we couldn't just um approve them on a faster timeline. Um.
Good with one and five? And then have further open discussion about the rest.
At the first meeting in March?
Yeah.
And are, okay.
Wish I might do it tonight or this week when we convene for the other?
I have no feelings on either, on that timeline.
I don't think it. Unless we just want to have a formal resolution and post it, then that's fine. Um, or we could do it now. Just make a decision so we can move on.
If the choice is between doing it now and doing it a specially called meeting a few days from now, let's just go ahead and do it now.
We have to make a motion.
Meeting that nobody's going to be attending isn't any value to anybody.
So I move that we approve the honorary street naming rec.
But I think we first have to change the agenda. Sorry.
I move to change the agenda.
To add this resolution concerning.
The resolution about changing two street names.
No, not changing names.
Honorary street names.
Tired. Honorary names, honorary naming at the recommendation of the Historic Resources Committee. Fourth Street from Main Street to Preston Avenue. Black History Pathway and which part of that?
The buyer's Snooki Way.
Between Preston Avenue and Henry Avenue.
Okay, between Preston and Henry to buyer Snooki Way honorary.
There should be a hyphen between buyers and Snooki because they're not the same people.
I I would, if you don't mind, I would, I would not use whatever uh referred to the formal applications. Uh, I don't if uh that were submitted, there may have been, I don't know, some paraphrasing or or so whatever, however, uh, she had, she had submitted for buyers. Sorry, didn't mean to interrupt, but.
No, that's okay.
I don't know what's in the actual, I don't have the formal application in front of me, but.
And request that staff look at the original application for the correct spelling of buyer Snooki. How's that for my, is somebody, do I add, I I moved to add?
Close enough. I'll second it.
Okay.
Ms. Robertson, does that sound legal? Have we covered everything?
Well, you can certainly do that by a motion, so the procedure is lawful. Um, hopefully the motion is clear enough to um
Sorry.
Make a a record of what's been approved.
Do you want me to rephrase it?
No, I think, I think unless Jeff and Rachel need clarification, I think we can craft a resolution that will do that and give it to Ms. Thomas um uh to publish.
Yeah, this, and this will be processed through Public Works, but I'll certainly communicate with them uh what you all have said tonight. So just so we're clear on who's, who's doing what.
There's Mr. Brown.
Uh, I've been observing. It's been noted and the fire Snooki as presented is correct.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
So it should be the, it should be the hyphen.
He's referring to the location, sorry.
Okay, okay. Thought you were saying name. All right.
Also, that motion was to amend the agenda, so we also need a vote.
To, yes.
To amend the agenda.
Yeah, so we're doing that now. So was there a second?
I seconded.
Okay. All right, Ms. Thomas.
Mayor Walker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McGill?
Yes.
Councillor Hill?
Yes.
Councillor Payne?
Yes.
Councillor Snook?
Yes.
Now we need the um a motion to um vote on the honorary street name to give staff the direction to uh move forward.
So let me just ask one question to clarify. Are you, are you simply doing this through a motion or is the motion to prepare a written resolution reflecting the the um, the naming that that you're referencing?
Through, we were doing the motion tonight.
Okay, so you don't need a resolution, you're just gonna vote on it and approve it by the motion?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I move. To.
Do you want me to give it a whirl?
Yes, please.
I move that we approve naming, the honorary street naming of Black History Pathway on Fourth Street Northwest between West Main Street and Preston Avenue. And Byers Snooki Way on 10th Street Northwest between Preston Avenue and Henry Avenue. As honorary street names.
Second.
Ms. Thomas?
Mayor Walker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McGill?
Yes.
Counselor Hill?
Yes.
Counselor Payne?
Yes.
Counselor Snook?
Yes.
And then we're gonna go ahead and have a discussion item for the others on, in March.
At that time, would we also want to then? Have a discussion on adopting the policy that the HRC recommends, which is the second part of this?
Yes, I think we should.
Yeah.
Alright, Mr. Boils, is that you, you good to go with that?
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Alright, so, um. For the work there and we'll continue the discussion at the March meet, first meeting in March.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
You too.
Thanks, you too.
Right, next up, we have the Capital Improvement Plan projects continued from the February 3rd, 2021 budget work session and the February 9th, 2021 Planning Commission hearing. So this is the discussion of whether we were gonna staff questions. Are we, do we have a? A clear answer at this point?
Well, I, I, so last week, I know that some of us met because the newer counselors really hadn't gotten a lot of background on two of the projects and so. Mr., just a multitude of staff, a lot of them from Mr. Brown's team as well as the budget team. Were really generous with their time and speaking with counselors at length about both the West Main Street project's history as well as status of the schools since. For the schools in large part, Mayor Walker and I have been part of those conversations and those work groups. And then obviously, a lot of discussion has been happening about the parking garage. As part of the CIP and I know that Mr. Boils has met with Mr. Richardson at the county and Mr. Engel joined him. And my understanding, and I'll let Mr. Boils kind of update, but was that, there's just some more information that we're gonna be kind of processing. And so. I, I'll let other counselors speak, but I, there certainly is a lot of still unknowns when we think about going out into the. Future of the CIPs, especially when we think about schools and not knowing what the scope of what they're gonna be and also thinking about the parking. Deck situation and what options we may have, but I'll let Mr. Boils just kind of chime in based on his, his interactions as well as their staff. But I, that's just kind of where I, I see things are still, there is still not all the information I think that everyone needs at this point.
So. So are we still at the point where we are? So I understand the information we're waiting on for schools. Are we saying we're gonna seek that information? Or are we still, are we still going out for the RFP for the schools and are we still? Going to review that information or are we saying we're pausing it even before?
No, that's going ahead. It was just updating, giving, giving the other counselors a little background on. The schools and the facility statuses and maintenance and they just got a full fledged, they, they, I provided them all of the documentation from our meetings in 2020. And then Mr. Brown's staff provided a summary to them on just with all, the overall kind of look at schools and where we are today and what's the next steps are. So they, I feel much more confident that everyone kind of has all the same background information at this point.
Okay.
But Mr. Boils can speak to the parking deck conversations.
Will be glad to. Mr. Engel and I had a very good meeting with the, the staff of Albemarle County. No real changes from that, but gave me an opportunity to review the MOU with the county. The, the bottom line that they did say was that they're just looking for that 90 to 100 spaces that are identified in the park, in the MOU. Excuse me. And that they are on schedule, at least within a couple of months of completing the renovations to the courthouse, so. Some parts of the MOU are tied to when that construction is completed, so they do anticipate to be on time with that. So that doesn't buy any time, but they were, were really indifferent, even though according to the MOU, they do get to make the choice. That if a parking structure is not constructed, we could provide them, again, at their choice, other parking spaces in the Market Street Garage. Or then a process to transfer the property back to the county with a financial settlement with that too. Both are very well spelled out in the MOU and it is the, fully the county's choice of that. But again, they expressed that they're really just wanting that 90 to 100 spaces, whether it's on the Seventh Street side or whether it's in the Market Street Garage. We, we left the meeting, at least I did, thinking that following the council's direction before, that we could delay. We, we don't eliminate the money out of the CIP, but we do delay it until we can look at other options of how that site might be better developed. Either solely for parking or some type of mixed use. To try to meet the, the deadlines for the MOU, it would be very difficult to change the plans that we're currently moving under now. I will say, our staff has been continuing to move forward with the current plans because that is what a previous council had approved. And so there hasn't been any type of action to change us from that path. Be glad to answer any questions, but, but that was pretty much what came of our meeting.
Okay, so the, so what we could decide tonight here is whether we're gonna delay. Ask staff to hold, to stop with the current plan and that you will bring us back some other options. Or we'll have meetings, two-two ones, everything we did before for what else is possible on that space.
Yes, we would, we would push some of the funding in the CIP, you know, a little bit further down. Again, it, it doesn't save us anything, it just. Changes the timing of the funds so that we could do our due diligence and look at other options for that site. That would be to either expand what we're looking at or confirm that what we, the what direction we've been going is the appropriate direction. Or otherwise, the other thing which, which has been a very large topic, I know you all have seen too, is to do an assessment of what the parking situation is with COVID. And try to make, it's gonna be very difficult, but try to make an assessment of what parking will look like post-COVID.
Okay, and then you will take care of the 90? What is it, 90 to 100 spaces to?
Yes.
That'll be set up?
Yes, we, we, we know that we have to, we have to accommodate that and, and we were very clear with Albemarle County. It's been our understanding from both the Planning Commission and the City Council, we intend to honor the MOU with the county. It's just how we're able to honor it that, that meets their needs.
Okay. Alright, Ms. Robertson, do we need to vote on that or is that the direction to staff? Is that sufficient?
I don't think you need to vote on anything because really we are just proceeding under the existing agreement.
Okay.
I would only add. I think. Well, as I've expressed many times, you know, I think we absolutely need to. Agreement and, and honor it. I don't think, you know, the parking garage of, of that size is the best way to meet it. I continue to think that. I will say, I think, you know, I think we'll. End up in the reality, the situation that. We may.
Why is your mute? Might not be muted.
Sorry, you know, we could, if, if we delay, I think we'll just end up with the same. Options if we could use this, better utilize the space, you know, if it was mixed use or incorporate housing in some way, but. There's no way that's gonna help us out on the cost side. I mean, that could only increase the cost potentially substantially if we're talking about. Particularly affordable housing added to the site, both because of the construction and in order to get the affordable housing will require subsidy. That would be a better use of the site. So on that side, it's a win, but it's not gonna help the affordability challenge that we're dealing with. So I think we'll just, you know. I think it's absolutely worth trying to evaluate if COVID has changed the parking situation more permanently. How many of these office spaces that have come online will now remain unutilized and perhaps will feel more comfortable that there's no need to build. A new structure because of the amount of spaces. But again, I would just say on the affordability side, I, I don't think expanding the project is gonna help at all that. I think we're just gonna. End up in a same situation of do we just find it more prudent to offer the 62 spaces that exist on that surface lot? Plus, you know, spaces to get to 90 or 100 in the garage. Maybe build, you know, a much smaller parking structure that just gets us to 90 to 100 on the 62 existing spots. So I, I would, I think we all realize this, but I think we're just gonna be in that same situation and as I've said before, I think the better option is to. Either build the smallest possible structure to meet the bare minimum of the requirements. And particularly if COVID has changed, perhaps allowing Albemarle to exercise their option about the lots versus spots in the garage. So. I think delaying it, you know, can help us evaluate those options, but I think we'll still be forced to. Make the same choice. I think we're gonna find a new, new mixed structure that's gonna bring down costs anyway.
Mr. Boils.
Correct.
Um, Mr. Boils, you, we also, you and I, you had mentioned when we talked about this, well, I guess it was our time, Michael's and my time last week. Looking at just all, kind of, you, you have to get up to speed and like, I know that Chris's team with the parking manager has looked at just, like, understanding the whole universe of what's available. And I know that there's been, like, efforts to try to reach out for private, public partnerships. And so I just think that at some point, you know, in the coming weeks or whatever, that would be helpful, I think, just for us all to kind of have a little more grounding on. What that parking universe looks like as we consider what spaces are gonna no longer be online because of other initiatives that are underway and that kind of thing holistically, so.
Exactly. We want to come back to you with a very comprehensive assessment and look. Because there are a number of other parking spaces within the downtown area that are going away because of construction projects. The other thing we would want to take a look at is what type of transit possibilities may help to fill some of those needs as well. So, you know, it, it touches on a lot of different areas that, that a little bit of time will allow us to come back to you with one comprehensive. I won't even say approach, but at least an assessment.
And I have a question about the two businesses. Do they still have to? Move on the same timeline or can we reach out to them and tell them that they may be able to stay a little bit longer, but we don't know. What that timeframe could be like. I can imagine that it's already, you know, difficult. I don't know if they already have new locations or what, but. Just if that's a possibility that we can extend to them, especially during this time that's so difficult, I would want us to do that.
Sure. I'll have to rely on Mr. Engel for that. I haven't been privy to any of those conversations.
Sure, we can take a look at that. The leases due technically end this year, but if there's gonna be any. Substantial delay, we could, we could look at that. We've made no promises. We did honor, we did make a promise to honor the current leases and as of the end of this year, we would have done that. If there is a substantial delay, it might make sense for all parties to, to entertain something more, but I wouldn't want to commit to that here. Without, without further considering that, as, as Chip indicated, I think it would be useful to have. Sooner than later to have a kind of an assessment. We're working on kind of pulling together all the old information from previous parking studies. And present that in a work session to the council so that everybody has a full understanding of the impacts. Any more than a 30 or 60 day delay does create the potential for. Impacts three years from now, if a new structure is not built. And if parking demand does return on any level to similar to what it was previously, it creates a, a negative situation for, for the Market Street facility. Which means the downtown business community, other visitors to downtown, et cetera, are, are potentially negatively impacted. So. If, if we're talking about a short, short delay, that can probably be accommodated without. Too much challenge. If it gets to be considerable, then, then we're certainly looking at. Additional impacts, but I think making everybody aware of what we understand those to be and having you all make a decision based on that would be in everybody's best interest and we're prepared to do that very soon.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Mr. Engel, do I gather that, let's see, we were expecting that we would have the parking garage. If, if we were on schedule, the parking garage would be done by what, November 30th of 2023?
That's correct.
So basically, from the, the time of issuing, issuing. Whatever procurement documents initiate the process to final construction, you were estimating a two and a half year process. Is that fair to say?
Yes, generally, that's, that's about the timeframe.
Okay. And so obviously, what we need to do is we need to have a crystal ball to tell us what things are gonna be like in two and a half years.
Yes, if you have one, pull it out and shake it.
I think we, shaking a snow globe may be the appropriate crystal ball for this evening's efforts, I think, if I'm listening to the weather forecast correctly. But my, my overall comments on this, I, I, I've been a staunch advocate for the parking garage, even when I was getting a lot of scorn from some of my environmentalist friends for, for doing so. But I also have to, excuse me, have to look at the. The current parking usage and to recognize that whereas a year ago at this time, we regularly, in the Market Street Lot, regularly had no more than about 50 or 75 spots. Even possibly available midday during the week. We've now got 350 spots available midday during the week. We may as well be on a permanent weekend as far as the, the usage goes. We also know that State Farm in the county. Has gone to, is giving up their building. They've gone to entirely work from home situation. We don't know what the future is gonna hold for Charlottesville, whether that same kind of mentality is gonna take hold. But I do think that number one, it would be a mistake to go ahead and build the parking garage at this time. Number two, I've expressed earlier some thoughts that, that just if we, we would look back in 10 years and say, what, you only built a parking garage on this prime real estate? And you would be, and we'd all be upset. But I also think that the notion that Mr. Boils mentioned. Of looking for some transit solutions is something else that I've, I've been trying to encourage. Thinking about the possibility of, you know, park and ride lots and, you know, for example, if people are coming from, from 29 North, we've got a whole lot of parking places. Out in all these shopping centers on 29 North that aren't being used right now. And coordinating that with some transit for park and ride could be a very attractive option that would save us a lot. The one last thing that I want to mention though is that even if we, if we were to take out the $8 million from, from the budget. From the capital budget and figure that, you know, maybe we end up building the structure some years down the road. I don't know. Uh, from the capital budget and fi- figure that, you know, maybe we end up building the structure some years down the road. I don't know. My guess is that it will take a couple of years, two and a half years, three years anyway. To for the COVID situation to sort of shake out for us to know really what we're what we're dealing with for the long term. In the meantime, though, I've also been struck by, uh. The fact that all of the things that we say we want to do as a green city. As an environmentally conscious city are bound up. In the changes that the truly transformational changes that are being recommended. Uh, and that we've already started to implement and funding for anyway, uh, on the West Main Street scape. Uh, I'm, I think this is really our nineteen seventy four moment. Nineteen seventy four, as you may remember, was the time that council decided after great agony. To just go ahead with the downtown mall project, and that was a four point one million dollar project. Uh, it was Charles Barber as the mayor and Mitch Van Yerres who made the decision. To look in the future and to decide to spend four point one million dollars. Four point one million dollars in nineteen seventy four equates to about eighteen point five million dollars in two thousand and twenty one. That's almost exactly what we're looking at right now in terms of the amount of money that would be required. Uh, to, and it's actually the amount of money we've set aside in in our, uh. In our pri- pri- previous budget discussions. That's about the amount of money we would need to get to get us through phase one and. At least a significant part of phase two and all of phase three. Uh, and I I just, the more I thought about it, the more I thought. The future of the city is going to be along the axis between downtown and the university. And we ought to be spending our time, our money, our energy, uh, our resources. On that area, and I would like to try to put the streets to the main street scape back in the budget. Uh, but back in the capital improvement budget and take out the Market Street uh parking garage. On the theory that I I just don't think it's likely that we're going to end up needing the Market Street parking garage. But it is certainly necessary that we make the changes, the transformational changes uh on West Main Street. So. Um, I know that there's a difference between eight million dollars and thirteen million dollars. I can do the math there as well. But I also think that in terms of long term benefit to the city. That thirteen million dollars would be much better spent than the eight million dollars we would be spending on the parking garage. And I would like to ask, uh. You know, ask the city manager to get together with the staff and figure out. If there's our ways to reprogram things and move things around. We've talked about some funds that are, there's a fair amount of money in that maybe we don't need to fund this year or next year or whatever. But to come up with a plan that might enable us to make the West Main Street project work. That's my thought on the matter at this point.
So the West Main Street would have been would be our next discussion, um. Point, but. Um, in terms of the garage, I am. Um, very comfortable and had asked, you know, when I met with, um, Mr. And the team too, like what else could go in this location and could it be more than just parking? Um. Time maybe wrapping my head around that this community who is demanding the the return the normal, the way they are. Um, will not be as soon as they can. Um, using services and visiting places and shopping, um. In a way that, um. Is similar to what was previously done, um, pre-COVID. Um, we are, we are getting those conversations, those demands, and as you all stated even earlier, that there are a lot of people who are just willing to take. Chances on things. So I don't know if we can say that, like, that what happened with the State Farm building. We haven't had a discussion about how many. Members we could transfer to work from home permanently. And until we have some of those broader discussions, we would just be hoping. That, um. It worked out versus actually knowing whether it would work out or not. And I'm not, uh, at all advocating for a parking structure if we don't need one. I just don't think that we can say. Um, and even thinking back to, um, Mrs. Hamel's presentation. We're still running up against the fact that there was no money for everything and, um. And then if we even choose two of those things, we're still running into a um situation where we don't know what would happen moving forward. And if any new, um. Projects that require substantial funding come up that we would not necessarily be able to fund them. So I don't think anything has changed about, um, and. I have some questions about your comparison to West Main and the downtown mall, but I'm tired, um. But I just don't know how we are rating West Main Street and saying and. Still thinking that that is a must and that it must continue at this time when we're talking about, um. Things like housing and schools. And even when we're talking about transportation to make sure that those parking garages may not be needed in the future. Something that has come up and it hasn't come up much in twenty twenty, but the previous two years. Um, the signalization and that infrastructure needing to be upgraded to even be able to move the flow of traffic. Throughout the city, we haven't, we're, that's not. Unless I missed it, um, in our, um, CIP, the way. That staff has talked to us in the past about it needing to be there even to move from, um. Cars to transit services more. And so there are a lot of things that I think are on those, um, staff. Submit requests for, but they don't make it to us for funding list. That we also have to consider how they impact these other items that we say we want, we want to invest in transit. So fewer people drive, so people will need less parking, but we don't think about every aspect that, um. That factors into that and, um. The upgrades in the signalization. Are are they funded somewhere in the current?
There is some money in the CIP for signalization. I don't know that it's optimal. I think Mar- I saw Marty on the call. He can probably speak to that a little bit better.
And I'm just using that as an example, but. Uh, something that has come up over the years that we've been kind of, you know, doing incrementally that. Based on what has been said previously, it's one of those things that needed a lot more support even. For us to be able to say that our buses will run on time to reduce the car traffic that we say we want to reduce for all the bike pad conversations that we. Have. I don't think all the time we link the conversations the way we need to link them to make sure that we're doing the right thing.
Yeah, I think right now we have just under two hundred thousand a year in for signalization.
And Mr. Brown or, uh, Mr. Solomon, that's not sufficient, is it?
I didn't catch the the full question, I'm sorry. Um, but I think the the two hundred thousand that Chris is mentioning for signalization. Um, that's for the the CIP for signal replacement and you cannot replace a single traffic signal intersection for two hundred thousand dollars. Uh, we're, we're, at this point, we're just building funds in order to do, uh. Various intersections.
And my only point for using that as an example, I was thinking about that when we were having this. Um, when you all, the planning commission discussion around this, because I was really surprised. At the support that West Main Street was getting, and I was thinking about. The conversations we've had over the years and in that moment wondering like how we're not linking. Um, all of these things together when we say that to make even a West Main Street and the. Beautification of it, but also some of the necessary changes of it actually, um, work if that is something that we say. Um, that i- is needed. So is that, I guess, that would be the, oh, go ahead.
My understanding was that if we don't do West Main as it is presently set out. We will have between three and five million dollars of additional significant capital costs. That we will have to fund somehow. So, yeah, uh, what we're really talking about is. A difference of eight million dollars between the the five mil- three to five million dollars. For the signalization, for the redoing the sidewalks, for curb cuts and ADA compliance and all the other. The above ground stuff that has to get done, uh, that that was estimated at three to five million dollars. And it's, it's not really funded, you know, in our present budget.
But we just take other dollars if we didn't go this direction, I guess.
Have we have.
Where I struggle, um, and obviously we met with at length with staff and lis- listening to the planning commission, um, and also just, you know, folks who. Have been along this process. I mean, the the, just how how long of a process this was, and I I see that, I understand that some people. Are referring to as a streetscape. I just think it's it's so much more than that and the amount of engagement and also just the investment that's happened. And not to mention, like, the biggest thing is just the other dollars coming from other sources that are not the city, and there's just not. A lot of projects where we we find those opportunities and I heard a lot of support for obviously phases one and three. Because those funding has been allocated for those or there's anticipated, um, approval of funding for phase three entirely through smart scale. But that leaves us with phase two of a gap, and I think that if if anyone heard the conversations that Counselor Snook and I heard with staff. About that, it's it's not the most efficient way to go about this is by doing phases one and three and not actually getting the whole piece. And I think that there's a lot of efficiencies with. Doing both phases together and, um, I think we're just still at this this. Point or just, it's challenging because we don't have the funding even in the CIP to do all three phases. Um, but I'm just, I'm really struggling with with just closing the door on this and, um, I really appreciate that we've taken the time to. To listen to a number of groups who have been part of the whole process, um, whether it's their environmental law center, like PEC. Um, and community members who have been part of this process, um, for for years that precede all of us on council. Um, but I I'm, I'm interested in in trying to find a way to to get phases one and two done. And obviously phase three would follow with smart scale. Phase four, I just think. Is is just is not in reach, um. And obviously there's some university dollars tied to that, but I think it's it's required to be more, most close phase to the university setting. But I'm just, I'm just really struggling with the amount of investment and time and energy and that we just have the cycle of just. Kind of going through a process and not being able to kind of see it through, and the Belmont Bridge went through several iterations and it costs a lot of money to get there, and I don't want us to look back and. And feel like we we cut this, you know, short. At the same time, like I I'm admitting, like, there is just a lot of budget shortfall right now, and it's almost impossible to put our head around. But obviously the biggest question mark, I think, that many of us came away with last week was just. The schools and what are their different options for the schools? Uh, right now we have that fifty million dollars sitting out there as kind of a placeholder. Um, and many of us think that it could be much more than that, but what does that mean for everything else? Um, it's kind of a big question mark.
Yeah. It's just that until we. Get through like this affordable housing plan, like if we were prioritizing. Um, and maybe that's something that we should do, and if we were prioritizing. Um, the unknowns of schools, the unknowns around the affordable housing plan, um, and whether. Anything else that came up with the, um, not knowing how long the pandemic is going to last and what, um. Impacts that will have long term on, um, stabilizing the community, citizens, businesses. Um, and how quickly that turnaround happens, does it happen like it did during the great recession, will we not really impact it? And then people who were kind of got back on their feet and then as mentioned earlier. Um, some people who were pushed out of the housing market, I know some people personally during that time were never able to re-enter it. Do we want to save, um, some space for that and just say that until we have some clear answers? Then both West Main and the parking garage, we will put them on hold and at and. Um, give staff the directive to not move forward until then, or are we saying that the unknowns around schools? The, um, affordable housing and that we'll not do anything, I guess, but West Main Street really well. Um. And the other two will fit in the budget, because if we prioritize West Main Street, that's essentially what we're doing. Because we don't have enough information about the other, um, even just the affordable housing and the schools yet. To even say what we're working with. And so if we okay West Main at this point. We are, um, limiting schools to an amount because we're boxing ourselves in. Um, and then everything else that comes up as a result of this pandemic. And how long we're in it, then we are also restricting ourselves there. So the money that's been spent to date, um. If we are scrap, not scrapping the plans, but saying. Until we have more information, we're delaying, then that will could be picked up off the shelf or. Out of the inbox in the future and picked up, um, where we, um, are leaving off today.
I guess I would just say, I mean. Sure, we could. Talk about this for hours. I think we're in a pretty similar place that we have been, but. I would just reiterate for me, you know, I've stayed where I stand on the parking garage. When it comes to West Main, I mean. From the affordability perspective, the only thing I could see is if you look at the difference between. Um, you know, there's necessary. Changes and repairs that are going to be needed there no matter what. So that number versus. What we're going to spend on it and that difference. And if that, if there was some way to get that really close, then it makes, you know, clearly makes sense. I mean, the challenge there is obviously. You know, we're leaving a lot of smart scale money on the table, um, but. Again, I mean, we're in the same situation where we could eliminate our city funding of West Main Street and the parking garage. And we still really wouldn't be that close even then to. Getting our budget in our CIP budget at a sustainable level. So there's a lot more to do beyond even just these. And given that reality, as I said, I mean. I think I see the value of West Main Street. I think it was streetscape. I think it would be positive if it could happen. I just can't really justify putting it ahead of. Uh, schools, housing, other basic infrastructure needs, um. Perhaps, you know. Section phase three is mostly fully funded by smart scale, it seems like. You know, perhaps if, you know, we eliminate phase four, I think UVA had said they were willing to contribute five million, you know, if they're willing to. Um, put that into earlier phases rather than phase four. And, you know, we look at some of the value engineering. And that cost when we factor everything in. Isn't that far from the five million or so that's going to be needed, even if we don't do West Main Street, um. Then I think it starts to make a lot more sense, but again, just given the unfortunate reality of. Um, our budget constraints, um. You know, we're going to have to reprioritize things and. Um, and again, even report reprioritizing the parking garage in West Main Street, um. It's not going to get us all that close to where we need to get anyway. Um, and the final thing I would say, which again, we've already discussed, but just reiterate is. I definitely think we're going to need to, you know, not in the immediate term, but long term, at least I would value some more. Um, joint conversations with the school board, um, and just really digging into, and I think, you know, some of this may happen once. Um. Uh, you know, we start to get some of that. Initial data and plans from the consultant, but just really digging into what are our goals? What are the costs here? Um, are we looking to phase this in certain ways? Um, how can we work as council with the school board in order to figure out, um? If there are revenue and what we know there's going to be revenue increases needed to communicate that to the public, if there's things that we could look like, like tying, um. You know, uh, uh, sales tax or something that goes directly to school reconfiguration. I don't know what it is, but we're going to need a lot more conversations long term. Because really, I think the the, um. It's that school reconfiguration process that's driving, um, the huge CIP budget crunch. Um, and we're going to have to deal with that reality. Um, we're also acknowledging, um. There's a huge amount of deferred maintenance at our schools that we know needs to happen no matter what.
Yeah, uh, and we've had those discussions and I have stated, I'll just say for me. Um, that I don't think that we can continue to support the schools operationally and at the amount level that we do. I've said this to them in meetings. And do this reconfiguration project without the sacrifice. I've said this to them in meetings and do this reconfiguration project without the sacrificing for the, you know, for that period of construction and maybe a little bit beyond that. We may get to these numbers back and it may be decided that we are only increasing like the one million dollars that they do for rehab projects a year to a sustainable amount. And then doing some of the necessary upgrades in the school system, just like we were talking about West Main. So even though I've been a big advocate of this school reconfiguration project, I understand when we get that information back, and that's what I have been trying to convey the whole time. And I've said in the meetings that, you know, we and two Dr. Atkins and school board members, that until we know, we're just keep circling like what ifs. And we spent a considerable amount of time last year, in twenty nineteen too, I think, having hypothetical conversations, which are very hard to have. And so then intention, you know, intent is question, motivation, commitment, all of those things are questioned because we just did not have, have the information. So I'm really interested in like what's even, you know, possible with that project? Because if we are where we are right now, then that means that we're going to have to have a lot of hard conversations about, about a lot of things. And I think my just record, I'm not going to push something without having those hard conversations. And so this is not just, you know, advocating for the schools blindly, but there is going to have to be an investment no matter what in the schools. And I think we have to have some room for that.
But I guess we've sort of been spinning our wheels on this conversation, you know, the profession is too. I guess for tonight, it sounds like councillors have sort of expressed where they are in the parking garage. It sounds like Heather and Lloyd, correct me if I'm wrong, but you seem interested in like looking at West Main Street without phase four and maybe engaging UVA about their contribution and how that fits in. And, you know, engaging with much more dialogue with the, the schools, especially as that design, you know, moves forward. I just don't know, there's anything, what other decision points or other things are, are left to discuss here? I mean, we're sort of obviously going around a lot.
Yeah, one of my thoughts, one of my thoughts is we have a brand new city manager. And let's let him put his creative thoughts to work and see if he's got some, some ideas for us that we can come back. And either he can incorporate into a budget or he can tell us, here are your choices or no, you're talking crazy talk or something. But I, I'd like to see Mr. Boils take a crack at seeing if there's any way to make sense out of what we've been saying. And I, I think the purpose of tonight was really just continued further guidance to staff for coming up with a budget. So I'm not sure we can give much more guidance than what we've given at this point.
Well, I think ju- just real quick, what staff has still been asking of us, they have said until they are instructed not to continue, that they are still working on the projects. So we are asking them to continue or we are saying to stop until. And so I think we're at the, we have covered the parking garage, but West Main Street and the schools were both a part of this conversation.
Well, the schools, my understanding that, that negotiations are happening and they should be wrapping up any day now with the consultant team. And that that work is going to be done. And then relative to West Main, I'm not really clear. I know that there is, I'm not clear when the next set of like major work is going to be done by staff or outlay of, of dollars. And is there opportunity for us just to pause while this, you know, next few weeks? Is it that close of a timeline that they need us to know directionally? I'm just not clear on when additional outlays are happening.
I'll have to rely on, on Mr. Brown on the West Main Street. The one thing we can do, I do think is very important for us, is to have a conversation with VDOT as to the sequencing for their funding for those projects. Those are some other deadlines that we would be up against. You know, they, they aren't immediate, but I do know from the very first funding for West Main, it's on a six-year timeline. So we would have to confirm those dates with, with VDOT. But any other immediate deadlines, I'll have to rely on Mr. Brown for.
So as far as immediate response to immediate deadlines, we're progressing right now, as mentioned earlier. But the situation with where we're at is just to determine, do we change the scope of work? That's what we're doing right now. Mr. Snook had identified the infrastructure, you know, part of the infrastructure right now that's included in the West Main project incorporates that three to five million. So that work will be addressed as the project goes through. But deadline wise, we would have to look at timeline as Mr. Boils had indicated and how that will affect our project, the project right now, where we're, where we are at.
So I guess Vice Mayor McGill, you are the only one. Are you more aligned with continuing with the project and figuring out some of the questions that councillor Snook and Hill has asked? Or would you be comfortable or what would your decision? Because it seems to be that you would be the deciding, I guess.
I mean, I am interested, I'm interested in, I'm interested in hearing more about how, what I get concerned about right now is also if, what can we do with just the revenue sharing match? There's a lot extra that is on top of what we need for our revenue sharing match. I thought, and if we didn't do the things that were required for the revenue sharing match or to balance the smart scale for phase three, what would that do to our standing in the future for other projects? I mean, I'm interested in understanding, I guess, a little bit more about the VDOT pieces. This is the piece, it's so outside of my wheelhouse. And I have been trying to learn about it. And I know we need to get a lot of work done on West Main Street. It's been deferred and deferred and deferred. But I, I don't know if we need to be investing this much into it, especially over other things that I find a higher priority.
Well, and I think we do know that, I think that smart scale money, if we didn't use it, would just go to Orange, I think, to build a roundabout. I forget which county. So it wouldn't go, it would go somewhere else in the region. But likewise, I don't know how that would impact, you know, long-term standing with VDOT. If, if at all, I don't, I don't know. But so for those interested in it, did it sound like you potentially, the other councillors interested in it? Were you interested in exploring not doing phase four and engaging UVA about their financial commitment? If, you know, it would go to phases one through three or?
I think if we did that, I mean, it really closes the gap on what we're talking about, unless you're looking at it from the lens of what we've already committed going somewhere else. And I just, you know, I, I just agree that will, I just agree that with all these things we're looking at comprehensively, I really wouldn't, I wouldn't mind just hearing a perspective, given Mr. Boils' experience with, with projects like this and in the broader scale as, along with all the other priorities that we're looking at. And I know we're not going to have all the answers around schools right away. I, I understand that. I'm also just curious, like, do we have any timeframe where we can table this for a while, but not completely kill it? I just would benefit from some clarity there. But I think that if you rolled, we are able to somehow roll the UVA dollars in to one of those earlier phases. I, I just think that those are the three phases that deserve the most attention. And clearly phase one and two and three is, is hopefully going to be covered. And we don't know for absolute certain until July, but.
The UVA was very clear about their commitment when they made it. And then this discussion was brought up again with the Brandon Avenue project. And I think they were clear then. I don't have the, I didn't have the stuff out in front of me today. But that is a conversation, but I think we are also maybe not, maybe being realistic. The way people have described this space and what it will look like, we're not going to get to phase four and finish three and then just stop. So we would still be making this future commitment. And I just think we need to at least acknowledge that we don't live in a community that's going to halfway do something. If we get to that far, then there will be a commitment discussion, so how to finish it.
I mean, planning commission was looking at one, three, which is really chopping things up. So I mean, I think that there's certainly folks that are looking at it that way. Just like I think there's been a suggestion that we should look at the schools that way. How do we phase this in so it's not fifty million dollars all at once or whatever the number is? And how do we kind of phase that in so that it's done in, in chunks? So I'm not.
Stan, I don't, I just don't know how we put schools and West Main Street in, and.
I'm not, I don't, I don't like that we're trying to pin one versus the other. I'm trying to just look at holistically, like the investments that are being made, where we're getting other dollars. We know we're not going to get other dollars for the schools at all. I mean, it's just, it's going to be all beyond us to figure that out. And so if you want to make a decision tonight, that's, so be it, that's fine. I just, I'm, I'm just interested in, in just kind of having these things all looked at holistically under our, our new city leadership and, and going through it one more time as we go through the budget process. But I'm fine with, I mean, I don't, I, I'm just, I'm done with the debate.
Unless that says that they can pause until there's this evaluation done, I think we just need to make a decision either way, no matter what it is. And because we've been having this discussion for a long time. And so I don't know, if we decided tonight to pause for thirty, sixty, ninety days, would you all be able to not move forward on anything until you got feedback from us? Whatever timeframe is determined that that will take? Or would you all need to continue doing today, tomorrow, through the timeframe that this assessment is occurring?
I, I will rely on, on both Chris and David. You know, they've got a much, much better handle on it than I do. But I do think we could get back, we, one of the things I'm thinking is for us to, to huddle together and bring in a couple of others like Mr. Williams from Transit and just talk through what maybe some of the opportunities and options may be, just to make sure we've covered bases. But, but I'd rather for, for Chris and David to, to be able to respond, they can do it much better now.
Mr. Dawson's here too. He was going to chime in.
Right. Yeah. Mr. Brown, if you'd like.
In regards to the inquiry pertaining to the project for West Main Street, yes, we do have some time where we can look and evaluate to make a determination. For the project, we can evaluate and make an assessment, re-scope the project that still meets the requirements of the funding sources. So we still have that opportunity. With regards to the comment or inquiry about the involvement of or application of the UVA funds, from my understanding, the phase four was tied to the UVA funds. And so I think there was a commitment that we would have to investigate that further. To my knowledge, there was only a letter from UVA. There is no, there is no MOA or MOU memorandum of agreement or memorandum of understanding with UVA regarding to the exact commitments of those funds. So we would have to investigate that to see if there are any specifics that are associated with those funds, how they would be tied or applied to the project itself. So with regards to the overall West Main project, we do have some timeframe with respect to that. Pertaining to the parking deck, we do have a follow-up discussion this Friday to talk more about that. And I think Mr. Ingles has given some outline regarding the memorandum of agreement with the county pertaining to that. But with respect to the project itself, we, our timeline for the project is based upon the MOA. So if we do do a delay, that is going to have an impact. And we can outline what those particular impacts would be. Chris, I would ask if you have any further or additional comments?
No, not, not too much, other than what I said before with regard to the project. As David said, you know, November twenty twenty-three is the, the timeline we were working to meet. A, a minor delay of thirty days is not going to, not going to alter that substantially, I don't think. But a substantial delay certainly could. If parking demand returns to anything like what it has been, for instance, last February, as Mr. Snook alluded to, you know, there was thirty to fifty spaces on any given weekday available at the peak hours. If you were to try and put ninety additional cars, doesn't take a genius to figure out that that's not going to work very well. So that's a, that's a real impact that has to be understood. And, and I believe, you, you know, we don't have a crystal ball as to when the economy will return. Everything that I've read seems to indicate this year is going to be slow, but next year's going to be, you know, a little closer to normal. So in twenty twenty-three, you'd, you'd hope to think that if it's going to return to normal, it would have done so by then. So, you, you know, with respect to when to build this thing, the timing might be good to, to, to do it now. Realize you all have a lot of complicated overlapping decisions and, and it's not an easy situation to figure out. But I think we would like the opportunity to kind of walk through all the information related to that particular project. It has been a while since council has taken any formal action on that and, and kind of give everybody a holistic picture of the full project, the timing and the impacts if it goes forward, if it doesn't go forward, and have you all make decisions from there.
This is Jack Dawson, the city engineer. If I may just speak about the schedule regarding West Main. Both phases one and phase two of West Main are scheduled VDOT right now, based on the, the state funding from them requires that we get to right away authorization, which means that the plan is defined within what we know we need to acquire and right away requirements or temporary easements and easements and what have you. And, and currently right now on the, on the schedule, phase one, that is due in July of twenty twenty-one, which means to the delaying, you know, thirty days isn't impacting this. But if we get to sixty days or ninety days, it's certainly at the point where we need to start those negotiations with VDOT right away, because we're, we, you, we can't get there and say, oh, we're going to stay on schedule, having done this for months and months and months. So there, there is some urgency about what direction we think we may need to be going here sooner than later, for sure. Obviously, three and phase four are not a short-term concern at all.
So Mr. Boils, would that mean that you could do the assessment for, through the end of March and maybe the first meeting in April? We could have the discussion or two-two ones at the end of March for the first meeting in April to, but that in between that time, we are saying that staff can pause until that discussion? Is that what? Does that?
I would say, let, let's just keep going. We will, we can do the assessment. I mean, and, and we can, we can get enough information to come back to you with some concepts and maybe even some recommendations. And staff can continue to keep working forward. You know, it won't be that much wasted effort based on whatever your decision then is in later March or April. So I would. I would say if you would, our staff will keep working, but we'll take a look and come back to you then by April first with some type of of recommendation or at least the opportunities and ideas, uh, to help you make your decision.
So I would just add to, from just a practical standpoint, as it relates to the budget, um, we're going to be firming up our proposed budget by the end of next week. Um, and so then you would also have the opportunity to, you know, obviously go from the proposed to the final adopted budget. But that will happen, you know, the first week in April. So, um, in terms of any funding needs that you would need in twenty-two for either one of these projects, we kind of need to make a decision. If not by next week, definitely something council would need to act on, you know, through the work session and the proposed uh, to the adopted budget process. That said, you know, for West Main, there's already eighteen million dollars allocated. If what they're talking about over the next year doesn't affect that, then, you know, in terms of the school project, the funding for the parking garage, those are in twenty-three and out, it sounds like, um, you know, some majority of that funding. So, again, just want to, you know, keep in mind the budget deadlines there.
Is there? I don't really see anything further right now for us as council to discuss. I think we've sort of gone around on it. I don't know if others disagree, um, but I would just reiterate again, you know, I know understandably, we're fixated on the park garage in West Main Street, but, um, I still don't see a lot of clarity around how we're actually going to make the CIP work again, even if those things were zeroed out and we don't know if that's the case, like there's a lot more to do, but certainly we're not going to solve that tonight.
I just want to thank staff again for all their time last week with us, um, at length and then obviously tonight, here we are at ten thirty. So, um, really appreciate it. And recognize that we're driving you all nuts and, um, these are, these are really big decisions and that's why we keep going around and around.
Okay. Next up, we had, um, discussion credit card policy.
As we talked about the idea of having a work session to create a policy.
Okay. Right. Do you need anything else from us about that? Oh, on that?
Well, just real, real quickly, I would, um, say again, I think, you know, just thinking about solutions going forward, I think if we can just get it, get it up and I think do it in a way where there's a streamlined process for, um, having council be able to provide support to advisory groups, boards and commissions, um, whatever it may be. I think there's clear utility and use to being able to do that, and I hope we can, I, and I think we can, um, just get to a policy that's clear and, and allows that to happen. Um, but that already been discussed and, um, I think it's something we can work out and get to a solution on.
All right. Any other? So that'll just be, we'll talk about scheduling for that and, um, attempt to get it done sooner rather than later. So maybe that, um, Ms. Thomas, do we have any, um, item for the, um, two, fourth Tuesday in, um, March?
Um, you're still in your budget? Work sessions? I don't know about that particular date. I know there was a desire to hold off on other types of work sessions while budget season was going on.
Well, we don't have one on that, um, date, which would be the twenty-third. It doesn't look like we do, then we, um.
I just have a council work session at three that everyone seems to have. There's a lot of.
Yeah, that's right, like our hold that we have for that monthly thing, but we do have a budget work session on Thursday. So, I mean, I'm fine with doing it on Tuesday.
All right, that's Tuesday. Okay. All right, um, any other comments? All right, so next, um, any other business?
Yes, um, I need to, um, I guess we're going to be adding at the end of the agenda, um, the following motion. I move to authorize the acting city attorney to authorize the law firm of Zunkel, Zunka, Milner and Carter to represent the city in connection with the court's hearing of all the pending motions scheduled for March first, twenty twenty-one and litigation with Albemarle County over recreational uses of Ragged Mountain Reservoir.
Second.
All right, Ms. Thomas.
Mayor Walker.
Yes.
Vice Mayor McGill.
Yes.
Counselor Hill.
Yes.
Counselor Payne.
Yes.
Counselor Snook.
Yes.
All right, that carries, um, five zero. Um, and next up, we have the, um, matters by the public. I'll turn it over to Mr. Willer.
If you'd like to address counsel, please click the raise hand icon in the Zoom webinar. If you're on via telephone, you can press star nine. Each person will have up to three minutes. Right now, we've got two hands raised. First, I'm going to go to Ange Khan. Ange, you're on with counsel. Can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
Go ahead.
So I just joined your meeting and very like a few minutes ago, and I am just in utter disgust. Disgust at the privilege, uh, folks on council who are debating a parking garage while we're in the middle of a pandemic and an economic crisis. People are dying literally on the damn street. People are unable to pay their rent. They're getting evicted. And you're talking about a parking garage. It's ridiculous. We have education to, uh, handle housing issues. People can't pay their bills. And you're talking about a freaking parking garage for forty-five minutes. If you put that amount of energy into solving or at least addressing some of these community issues, we would be a lot further than where we are. I am disappointed. You spent a what? A good three to five days on a fricking credit card gift card. Right? Like, come on. Where is the humanity here? Where is the humanity? I'm pissed. I am livid. I wish we were in person because you could really see my face and understand uh, the, the emotion that I have right now. It is disgusting. Disgusting. Y'all have, the, the majority of the council has privilege that none of us will never, ever have. But yet you're talking about a parking garage. You have privilege. You will never, ever, ever be unhoused. You will never, ever, ever live paycheck to paycheck. You will never, ever, ever have to worry about obtaining any type of basic necessity other than fricking parking on Main Street or wherever the hell you plan to put it or wherever it's supposed to go up. It is ridiculous. Do freaking better. I'm done.
Thank you.
Mayor Walker, next up is Pastor Marvin Morgan. Pastor Morgan, can you hear us? You'll need to unmute your microphone. And there should be a button in the lower left corner of your screen. I'll go ahead and try to do it for you. There you go. Can you hear us now? There you go. Try it again.
I can hear you. Can you?
We can. We've, mission accomplished. Go ahead.
Thank you so much. Uh, well, I'm not here to fuss tonight. I was with you from four to six P M. because I thought that was the segment. And now I have sat through this meeting and gained tremendous appreciation for the hard work that you do as council members. You have many things on your plate. There is one issue, however, that we have, uh, been concerned about for quite some time, and that is, uh, let me ask you this question. You painted with Duke University. If you are, did you know that the Duke University campus, the architect for that main campus was an African-American? Did you know that? How many of you knew that? Did you know that there's one person in the state of Virginia who's called the Virginia Calculator? Because he can work figures, could work figures in his head with such accuracy. His name was Thomas who was a slave. And even as a slave, he could work numbers faster than a calculator. Well, can you imagine what he might have accomplished if the public had known about his gifts? There is this building downtown at nothing Court Square, Zero Court Square, where that was used to sell slaves in Charlottesville. When students come to this city, young people go on field trips. They have no way of knowing what that building was used for. Unless you, as a city council, agree to have that building turned into a court square enslavement museum. That is the vision that some members of the public has, have for that building. There is an architect who, along with his students, he's the head of the firm, have agreed to provide complimentary architectural services. If you're willing to turn that building into an enslavement museum. So people would know what the history of Charlottesville is. Ladies and gentlemen, if we don't know it, we won't know that a black man was the architect for Duke University's original campus. We would not know that a black man had a head so smart that he could compute numbers faster than a calculator. We're asking you to embrace this idea and see how many people would step forward to support it. Thank you.
Thank you. I wasn't paying attention to the time. So does anybody know how much over?
Not very much.
Okay.
We have two.
Counselor Hill, did you just want to just repeat your response in case? You didn't hear it or?
Yes, the Historic Resources Committee before the pandemic, um, happened, um, had started a process of engaging with the descendant community in a comprehensive way and with the pandemic that had to be put on hold, but, um, we'll be taking up options for, for doing so in a virtual setting as necessary if we aren't in a position where we can do things in person. Um, and that was discussed, um, some in our last meeting and I anticipate, and I certainly will bring it up again this week, but just wanted to make sure we reiterate there's a commitment from that committee, um, and intern from council, um, to make sure that we are engaging the appropriate folks, um, in that process and doing it thoroughly. And hopefully sooner versus later.
Got two additional hands raised right now. Next up is Yasmin Washington. Yasmin, can you hear us?
Hey, how are you?
Good. Go ahead.
Okay, um, so I was wondering, I noticed that you all were talking about, um, the West Main project as well as reconfiguring the schools. Um, I know that like prioritization is like obviously imperative to make sure that these are getting done in a timely fashion and that you are considering, um, no longer doing the West Main or putting that on pause. I was wondering if you all had considered possibly, um, reconfiguring Buford and, um, Walker separately as opposed to doing those together.
Yeah, that's a, when we get the, um, this is back from the firm that's hired, that's when we would make the decision about what's even possible. Or if any of it at all is possible. So they should, um, present the information in such a way where we would, should be able to make that, um, determination about any or all, or, um, even if at that point the school discussion leads to, um, something different, because the elementary schools are a big part of this, um, have been a big part of our conversation and they would not be included in this, um, um, proposal in the, in, with full scope. So yes, I think if the, just a short answer is yes, when we get, um, the information back, that will likely be a big part of the discussion.
Great. And, um, Don gathers, you had your hand up, but it went down. Want to give him one more opportunity. If there's anyone else, last chance to get in line, please click the raise hand icon in the Zoom webinar. Don, you're on with council again. Go ahead.
Thank you. I just didn't want to, uh, and I appreciate y'all's time. I just didn't want to, uh, want us to miss out on the irony of as we run headlong towards the recognition and celebration of Liberation Day, the third of March, that, uh, once again, we have, uh, a black leader, uh, being excoriated here in this town. This, this town seems to just chew up and spit out its, uh, its black people in position of, of power and authority. Thankfully, we have, uh, John ten, twenty-five to hold on to. Since the, the, uh, conversation came up about, uh, street rename, and I'd like to know where the, uh, the issue stands on my request, uh, for Market Street. If someone can address that and respond, I would greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Haven't we already voted on that request before we even sent this to the Historic Resources Committee? For the Black Lives Matter? I thought we voted on that.
Correct.
Yeah.
That's been approved.
So I'll make sure we follow up, uh, with Mr. Boils and council with an update on that.
We should have an update at the, um, next meeting. This, that could be a part of the
Yep.
full discussion. Or no, because the Black Pathway, then the, yeah, we can still get, but Public Works would know that they could just go ahead with that. One with the other two that we voted on tonight.
But I thought that once it was approved, they, they already were aware that they could go ahead with it. I was just wondering why it hadn't been done to this point yet.
Yeah, we don't know. That's what we're saying. We'll still give the update, um, the next meeting in case, um, just wherever we stand. I don't have the answer for that. I don't think anybody else do in this moment.
I mean, I, I just, I would make an assumption, but I don't know that we were in a position to have a ceremonial thing with COVID, but if that's something that a council, you know, wants to, to endorse, then that's a different story. I don't know that we've had staff that are, would be doing that type of a ceremonial thing right now in this environment, but that's, I mean, I'm just saying that could be an issue.
Yeah, but we just. Them up.
We don't even put them up. Yes, without a ceremonial, yes, yes.
Yeah, that's rational. Just, um, just be good to let the community know what, uh, what the issue, if any issue exists, what it might be. As to why it hadn't already been done.
Okay. Reverend Brown as well, didn't we?
Correct.
Ron Ross.
And I, I don't want to speak out of turn here. I think the, um, one of the issues teed up in the report tonight was the exact nature of the signage and public work. was the exact nature of the signage and Public Works was presenting an alternative option. So certainly, I think if, if council wants to provide any feedback on the signs we have been doing that are in line with the existing street signs, street names versus a separate piece of signage that would be separated from the, what we see at a corner.
That was my understanding as well. And it was mentioned also that not every sign that is erected is, has a ceremony to go along with it. Usually, an organization would make that or they would lead that ceremony rather than the city being the lead on that.
Right, I'm sorry. That was missed remembering.
I guess regarding that recommendation in the report today, I thought the recommendation about the speech signage makes sense. I thought what they were recommending makes it more prominent. So that's just my perspective. Likewise, voted in support of both those and still remain in support.
Great. We have one additional hand raised. Rory Stolzenberg. Rory, you're on with council. You've got three minutes.
Thanks, Brian. And good evening, council. So I'd just like to chime in to commend you for making the right decision on the parking garage earlier. And Ms. Khan and Mr. Gathers earlier and others gave a much better explanation than I could on the why. So I'd just like to push back a little bit on Counselor Payne's comment about increased costs for other uses of that garage. When you take that five point four million dollar parcel right there of land and choose more productive uses for it, there are many financing options that are available that could allow us to build those uses without using city bonds. As Mr. Sale suggested, section one oh eight loans are possible if we choose to go with affordable housing on top, which I think could be very viable as long as we build two stories or less of parking in the podium. So I hope that as you explore your options there with the additional time that you've asked for, you fully examine all those options for making the best use of that property to really meet our public goals and contribute to the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Tanisha Hudson. Tanisha, you're on with council. You've got three minutes.
I just wanted to end the night. I have a couple more items to cover here tonight. Last item, this is clear, a clear indication that you guys just, just don't want any piece of legacy that touches Dr. Richardson to stay here in the city. Chip, did you even ask Letitia to stay? Did you even offer for her to stay? Did you even want to walk into this job, into that office that you sit in right now with no help? Because you don't have no help right now. So let me paint another picture to the people of Charlottesville. This is another clear indication that you all clearly, it's not just Dr. Richardson. It's not just Mayor Walker. It's not just Letitia Shelton. This is about black people, period. This city, this university, Monticello. This is the Thomas Jefferson Way. That's all it is. Y'all gonna bring some of y'all little homeboys, some of your little frat brothers, some of your little law school or, or Darden Business School affiliates from UVA. They're gonna be sitting right up in those seats. And as long as I'm here, living and breathing, we gonna have a problem with that. Because clearly Chip walking in that door, you could have at least had one deputy beside you. And now you stuck to do that job all by yourself. Y'all don't see the big picture here. Y'all just really don't see the big picture here. This is deeper than twenty-five dollar gift cards for people coming to speak. This is deeper than somebody not getting their budget. This is deeper than a parking garage, which I knew y'all had to build anywhere Albemarle was gonna pour that course out of the city. Because they got enough space to do it. The issues in this town are deeper, deeply rooted, very racist. And just look at the picture. If I take a picture and screenshot this screen right now, we got one black person sitting on this camera right now, everybody white. That's how y'all want it. And what y'all doing to the mayor right now, you proving that? You proving that? And I got my own issues with her. But regardless of that, I know that we do align for a lot of other things. We may, we may not agree on one, but we agree on many, many more. But all of y'all sitting up there besides her, y'all don't believe in what you ran on. You're a fraud. You're a liar. And people need to see that. The Democrats really don't care about people color. You don't care about repairing anything. You don't care about reparations. You care about whatever the Democratic Party is gonna make you push for them. So when y'all leave tonight, know that it's about race in this city. Race. And you asked for change that you wasn't ready for. Charlottesville is a city that don't want change. Y'all have a good night.
And was there someone commenting? And I just, I, I would just want to say in terms of not gonna have a discussion about personnel, but I do want to just state that I have, I hadn't had a conversation with Ms. Shelton, and I expressed that to her, and she's aware of that. But I do think that we definitely have to do a better job of making sure that we communicate with people and that if there are concerns expressed that we do, you know, pay attention to those. Ms. Hudson is a part of the reason why I wasn't necessarily communicating, and you all know what those things were. But I do regret after having gone a couple months with not communicating that I should have done a better job. And I have apologized to Ms. Shelton about that, not wanting to get caught up in the connection she had and some of the things that were happening there. But I was really disappointed, I will say, to learn some of the feedback that she, that she gave me. And what I'll say to that is I always try to make sure that when someone comes to me, I don't make any decision just based off of what I am told. I am very aware. I just take all the feedback and, and have the conversations with all the necessary people. I do regret not doing that in this instance. And one of the things that I think it's going to be very important if we are going to be able to move forward with Mr. Boils, whoever runs for council next, is that we're going to have to make sure that we are demanding integrity and honesty from everyone and that we are not pitting staff, members, counselors, city manager against each other, that we create a much healthier environment than I think we have had. And so I hope that there's a commitment from everyone to do that.
I'm certainly committed to us creating a healthier environment for everyone.
Very much committed to that.
All right. So is there, there wasn't anyone else?
No more hands.
All right. Well, that's it for the night. It's been a long four to eleven, basically. But have a good evening and thank you all for, citizens for sticking in there with us. Have a good evening. Meena Jarn.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night, everyone.